Welcome to the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting for April 20th, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present today. Everyone is here. Thank you once again. And we need to approve our minutes for the April 6th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. If everyone had a chance to review those ahead of time. If you have any additions or corrections, please let us know, and otherwise, we need a motion to approve.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Motion is second.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have our consent agenda. And again, everyone had the chance to review these items prior to the meeting. If you have any of these items you would like to have removed for further discussion, please let us know. And if not, we will be ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have our GDO section. Our first item there today is the Clary Park Lot 19, the Garden District Town Homes. This is final design and site plan review of 134 townhouse dwellings and 21 single-family detached dwellings on 17.7 acres, zoned PUD, GDO 1, and GDO 2, located along Wilkinson Pike, Willow Oak Trail, and Gresham Park Drive. David Weekly Holmes is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you Chair Jones and Planning Commission members. Our first item under the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider a site plan approval and final design review of the development that we have been referring to as Garden District Town Homes. In the planned development package, the PUD book, this area is identified as Area 2. However, on the master plan during the preliminary plating exercise, it's Lot 19. So I just wanted to correlate those two with each other so that you would realize they're the same area. This does have frontage along Wilkinson Pike, and during the zoning process, some improvements in Wilkinson Pike were discussed at length. Those improvements are being constructed by the developer, but will be required to be done prior to this development being accepted. As Chair Jones mentioned, the proposal is 17.7 acres, and it is 134 single-family attached dwellings, which is townhomes, and 21 single-family detached dwellings. And so those, although they are physically detached homes, like single-family homes, they are part of a horizontal property regime, so it's an ownership style that's similar to townhomes. However, those 21 single families will be detached. The Planning Commission will be considering the site plan for this entire development today as far as that site plan approval. And so that would be the landscaping, the civil aspects, drainage, access, all those elements. However, the final design review is only for the first section of residential structures. As you know, in the gateway, it's an aesthetic overlay, and we have some additional standards and gateway design overlay that require high-quality development, both materials, design, and color. And so as part of that, the Planning Commission's role is to review the architecture for those. And so today, this Phase 1 development, including the single-family and the townhomes, are included for your consideration. And initial design review last month, I passed around the material sample boards. I have them again today, if you're interested in seeing those. There were several different options and palettes that we have available for you to look at. So you can expect that with today's review, you'll be giving final approvals for the site plan, and then initial, or final design review for the Phase 1 section of the townhomes. The single-family detached homes, we permitted, just like, I think my screen's not up, it looks like maybe Matthews is on. They switched from mine to yours.
If they could switch back to the podium? I was just trying to follow along on my screen.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea. I appreciate that A student attitude Mr. Bromley has. Okay, so the site plan approval will be for the entire development, so I just want to clarify that. When we come back to you in the future with just architecture, that's why, we'll do it twice, we're planning to do it twice for Section 2 and Section 3. And so the site plan appears to be able to meet the specific standards identified in the PUD, the Planned Unit District. They are proposing the pool in the townhomes. The pond on the property is a wet pond with a fountain, so it will truly be an amenity, not just a hole in the ground with a little mucky water at the bottom, but an actual amenity to the site, which I think is important when applicants are asking for us to consider those as enhancements, they ought to be enhancements. The design includes those, you probably recall, there was quite a bit of discussion during the zoning about the lack of front porch and those traditional elements that we really expect to see. And so with these developments, they were allowed to do some at-grade patios and make some commitments. And so you can see there's some sheets in the plans that show you those at-grade patios that are connected with sidewalks and amenities as well. Of course, a mail kiosk is required by the United States Postal Service. And then I'll just go through a few of the images for the townhomes. Probably if you had trouble downloading the packet today, it's probably because of this project, so if you're interested to know why it took so long. But they've got the different elevations, different options for the Section 1 of the townhomes. And please let me know if you'd like to see the material board. I didn't know if that would be helpful, again, or not to remind you of what they're doing. The applicants are here representing their project. If you have any questions from them. We did ask for them to give us information on the garages. The zoning ordinance is specific about if garages are counted toward parking, that they need to meet minimum dimensions, and so they had to increase the size of those garages from what was submitted last week, last month, to this month, to meet the minimums, but they now do. As you know, there's mixtures of two-car and one-car garages, and so they have room for the cars per our minimum in the zoning ordinance. And the solid waste in this area is going to be served by a private hauler, not the city. The city, the alleys don't meet street specifications, so our trucks can't make it through there. So they'll have a private hauler pick up trash with carts. Those carts will be stored in the garage, and so we asked them to show that as well. And so that is on the image that I have on the screen for you. Do you have any questions from staff, in the staff comments, or anything that we may have mentioned previously?
Can you just, on what we're, well, what we're seeing on here, where are the detached? Everything, the colored sections are all the townhomes, the attached? And then are the detached up on whatever main roadway we're looking at up there?
Yeah, sure, I'll show you. So the way that we permit single-family detached homes is different than the way we permit single-family townhomes. The detached are here. So this is the buffer, Wilkinson Pike, and the Wilkinson Pike buffer. Those units actually front onto that buffer, and then this is an alley that runs between the detached and the attached. I don't know, that's terrible. But these are it. And so when you pull a permit for a single-family home, actually, at that time, a planner, one of our staff planners, gets the application and gets the building plans for the home, and they look in the program book and make sure that each building permit application, the home for them, matches what the program book says. That's how we, that's how we manage planned developments with single-family detached homes in Murfreesboro for all planned developments. But for townhomes, they're sometimes trickier for our staff to manage the permitting for it because it's a residential structure. However, it's got a site plan associated with it, which is not normally what you have with single-family detached. So there's a site plan, which is kind of like a commercial aspect, it's the same for apartments. And so those buildings actually need to be reviewed by Planning Commission. The townhome buildings, which of course consist of four or five units, it varies within the development. So with your review and approval, you need to review the townhomes. With the way that single-family is permitted, the staff planner would review it. But I did notice some things that they needed to change with the detached, and go ahead and gave them the feedback, because in the program book, it did say that the detached should have details such as shutters, wall lanterns, louvers, dormers, appropriate to the architectural style, and to add interest and richness to the front facades, and that all facades visible from public accessways should be similar to the primary facade in materials and design. And I asked them to increase the brick. Although we're not ready to permit the single-family, I didn't want them to have a misconception that that was getting approved as it was submitted. I think they've made some changes to it, but as far as process, we'll process those through our ordinary permit review.
So the garages that you potentially had some concerns about were on the townhomes?
They were.
And just certain units within there?
So I believe it was, what they needed to increase was the two-car garages, if memory serves me, which it probably doesn't. I think our ordinance is 19.6 by 20. Let's see if I can look at Matthew for my cheat sheet here. But I looked at the zoning ordinance, and I saw that what they submitted didn't have those minimum dimensions. And so if I scoot in here, now they're just there. So it's, yep, 19.4 by 20 for two-car. And actually, one car is 11.4 by 20. So you can, I've zoomed in, and so you can see a two-car next to a one-car. The area with the X in it is the area that's our minimum.
Okay, any questions or concerns from the Planning Commission regarding this final design and site plan review?
I gotta turn it around a little bit. Are we, are we being asked to approve something that's different than what was on the original, in the original book? Is it a smaller garage than?
No, we're not, you're not being asked to approve anything different. It's just what they showed you last month wasn't big enough, and now what you're showing you this month is big enough, if you picked up on the changes.
If nobody has any comments, I'll make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments. I'll say it.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Clary Park Lot 17, the residences at Clary Park. Final design and site plan review of a 300-unit apartment complex on 11.5 acres, zoned PUD and GDO 1, located along Robert Rose Drive and Robbie Corleau Lane. Hans Clary Park Land Holdings LLC is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you again. This next item is also for you to consider site plan approval and final design review for the apartments that are part of the Clary Park PUD. These apartments are informally referred to as residents at Clary Park, but on the master plan and preliminary plat, they're identified as Lot 17. And so Lot 17 is what we're looking at. I have an ortho of the area on the screen. What it doesn't show is the Clary, or Robbie Corleau Lane, that will run in front of the apartments here. And so it hasn't been dedicated yet or built, so it's not showing up on the map that you see. And then you don't see this road extending here. The townhomes were in this area, and there'll be townhomes here, and so this is the apartments that's highlighted. Hopefully, that gives you an idea of where we are. These apartments are zoned PUD, Planned Unit District, and a part of the gateway, Design Overlay District. The PUD allows for 300 units, and this plan calls for 300 dwelling units. That's what's being shown here. The plan proposes three four-story buildings, and let me go to that plan real quick for you. There, you can see. The plan proposes three four-story buildings with 30 studio units, 131 one-bedroom units, 115 two-bedroom units, and 24 three-bedroom units. The density is 26.1 dwelling units per acre, and this area 5 in the program book, and that was the maximum that was permitted in the zoning. The way the site is organized is so that there is a community pool in the middle of one of the buildings that's exclusive to the residence. And then also, there's a grand lawn between these two buildings, which provides additional amenity and formal open space for the development, not just the residents of Clary Park Apartments, but the others would be expected to go with this in this area. Initially, the applicants have proposed gating off the grand lawn, but per staff suggestions, have removed those because those were, during the zoning process, presented as an overall amenity for the Clary Park development. So if you gated it off, it would obviously be a regulated access and not available to all the folks there, like would be in a traditional mixed-use development. The zoning book allowed some exceptions to this. Of course, one was the density, what we just talked about. And then another one was to the required parking calculations, so they were allowed to reduce the number of required parking within the area. A third exception was to not require additional parking for the commercial component of this apartment. And you remember, during initial design review last month, I posed the question to you, does what they're showing for the commercial, 4,000-foot commercial space meet the expectations or what we expected to see in the PUD? During the zoning process, there were, of course, two applications. The first was denied, the second one was approved. And during that negotiated zoning, the developers proposed to put in commercial space in these apartments to make it more of a, to make it more of a mixed use. And so I will show you the four plans, and I believe they'll come up and present to you what they're asking you to consider. But during that meeting last month, you did ask for them to, let's see, provide more information on the flexed office space, to ensure it meets the commitments made for this area during the zoning process. You mentioned the office storefront should be revised so that it looked more commercial, more like an office, and not just like a continuation of the apartments. The Planning Commission reviewed the floor layout and initial design review and expressed some concern with the plan as submitted because it did not appear to meet the intent. So they're here today to present that to you. I also asked them, when they come back today, to have information on the business license for the area, so we can understand, will it be a true office, or will it be like an office space for the residents? And so we'll invite them to the lectern to go through this information for you. Another thing you asked for was a clear floor plan that showed this as commercial space. And so that's what they'll come up to talk to you about. The PUD did specify the exterior resort pool with a large colored concrete and paver decks, open-air seating, gathering, rather large fitness facilities, dog parks, exercise rooms. All these amenities are what make a high-density development a desirable place to live. You can see that this plan also includes a detention pond in the corner that's a part of this lot. They've mentioned that they'd like to, maybe in the future, subdivide that off as a common space element. But the plan did show a walking trail around that, a shade structure, enhanced landscaping, and it would be one of the enhanced ponds as well, not just a hole in the ground with dirty water. The architecture remains very similar to what you saw last month. Again, I have the material sample boards that I'm glad to share with you. It helps orient you or give you some ideas. They do have keyed entrances, which are enclosed entrances. That was part of what we're looking at. Some of the comments I made were to ensure that there is lighting in these areas so that it feels safe, and then also to add architectural lighting to the buildings, particularly the facade along Robert Rose Drive. The building along Robert Rose Drive is 15 feet from the property line, and so we really want that presence to be a nice presence along Robert Rose Drive, as well as what's internal to the site. I think they obviously want to have a good face to what face is internal, but we want to make sure what's on Robert Rose Drive is meeting those expectations as well. And so I have the various elevations, they all look kind of similar. They do have some garages in the space, and so they grouped more of the garages together. They're proposing to use hardy and brick on the garages, and this is what they've submitted to you for your consideration. And then there's the perspective rendering of the office space that I think you'd asked the architects to come back with, so that you can see how that relates to the site and how that may look. And I think it's just the, and then, this is the space that's for the commercial component, the 4,200 square feet of business. And so after you, after I answer any questions you have, the design team would like to come to the lectern to present some additional information, or if you want to hold your questions, I'll be available at any time.
The picture we're looking at right now, which shows the little section, I think 4,200 square feet of the office space, or commercial, retail, whatever we're calling it. Can you show me on the big picture with the three buildings showing? It's on one end or the other of that main building that's out on Robert Rose?
It's actually not that building.
Okay.
Might have Mr. Taylor do this, but it was my understanding it was here.
Okay.
And so this is Robbie Corleau down here.
Uh-huh.
And of course, Robert Rose Drive is at the top.
I see.
And there's going to have a little appendage that comes in, and so it's right there.
Okay. Okay.
Sure.
And whoever, I also wanted clarification. You mentioned the parking that we had to, or they asked variants, or we did something different there in the parking, regards to parking on this section? What did we do there?
Let's see. A second exception, the site was to allow parking ratio for one-bedroom units to go from 1.5 parking spaces per unit to 1.1 per bedroom, and then remove the requirement for up to 10,000 square feet of office space to have parking within the apartments.
So no required parking for the 10,000 square feet?
For the up to 10,000. They're doing the minimum, not 10, obviously, but not to, they're not being required to provide office space parking, which is generally 1 to 300. And so they don't have to provide that. And the one-bedroom units, our zoning ordinance requires 1.5 parking spaces for every one-bedroom. And so they're asking for that ratio for that, or they asked for that ratio to change to 1.1 per bedroom instead of 1.5 per dwelling.
Just on the one bedrooms?
Right, and so they have in the development, the studios would be considered one-bedroom, although they're not, not really one-bedroom. But where did I have my calculations? 161 one-bedroom units, so if you did 161 times 1.5, 161 times 1.1, you would see what the difference is. I can't do it in my head right now, but Mr. Little Lance can.
But I was, so we didn't, we didn't, there's no requested change or approval on two-bedroom and three-bedroom parking requirements?
There aren't. The site, there are no requested changes for two-bedroom, three-bedroom. There aren't very many of those, and the site plan is consistent with the zoning plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Green before Mr. Taylor comes up? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Chair Lady Jones. I think Margaret Ann did a good job walking through the main points that we talked about last month. I think this screen, this view is probably one of the most important, where we changed it to all the storefronts. We've got a lot of glass here, which is much different than the rest of the building elevations to call attention to the commercial aspect of this part of the project. And then the floor plan that she had up, you can see the individual office suites. All these will be leased to individual businesses. We have some direct doors outside, so that if we want different businesses to have that storefront, same thing here, they will have that opportunity. So again, all those will be leased to individual businesses, not just open for the residents of the community. We have a completely separate space for them if they so choose. It would be approximately right there. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. I think everything else is consistent with last month from the architecture. Those were the only changes that I can identify.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
One question, too, on the layout for the businesses. Is that set in stone, or can a business do a slightly different layout if they want?
So we have laid it out so that, you know, you could have individuals. If a business wanted to come in there and lease the whole space, they could set it up how they wanted to. This is just showing an option. So if some, but yes, somebody could come in there and say if they wanted to rent out that space and reorient a few things, they could definitely do that. And then they would have this, these doors out to the front, much like, much like most of our flexible or retail spaces or shopping centers around town. Sometimes that front door will move some to accommodate future tenants either getting split or getting combined.
Okay. Thank you.
If not, we're ready for a motion.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Subjecting staff comments.
Thank you. Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Slim Chickens, re-subdivision of Lot 2, Seven Brew. Final design and site plan review of a, excuse me, 510-square-foot coffee, food, or beverage kiosk located on 0.89 acres, zoned commercial highway and GDO 1, located along North Thompson Lane. R&amp;B Partnership is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. This next item under the great gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider site plan approval and final design review for a proposed Seven Brew, which is a coffee kiosk. Essentially, that's a small standalone building that only allows to go coffee, and unlike, like a Panera, you don't go inside and sit down and order. You can only order from the exterior. The use is permitted in the underlying zoning and within the overlay district. This lot was many years ago developed in part of parking for an area, but since then, redevelopment has happened. The name of the subdivision is Slim Chicken Subdivision, which is why this item has Slim Chickens in there. When we name our site plans, we refer back to the subdivision so we can find them 30 years in the future. But it's Lot 2, and it's a very small lot. In the past, we, Planning Commission, have looked at a potential tenant to move here, but being this small in the gateway, it's, we warned them that it was a small lot for a gateway lot. That's hard to meet our standards on small acres, but they created a lot anyway, so that tenant, a custard place, found another location that works much better for them. However, with this being a super-small building of 510 square feet, they were able to review our community standards and design the site to meet those standards. The old YMC is just to the south, so if you're looking at that green pool on the picture, that's what you see.
A little green.
So here's the site. There's a lot of information on its site, so it's not really as clear, but the building is actually just right here. They, they are a, we've actually seen several site plans for this model of a coffee kiosk, I believe it used to be popular, went out of vogue, and it's now coming back. They are proposing joint access to the existing drive to the north, so they'll share that access with some chickens themselves. I suppose the people who park there to get their chicken will have to find a new place to park, because if you go there now, you'll see them parked in that driveway. But the development of the site, I think, will help encourage them to use that correctly. They also have a ride-in, ride-out onto Thompson Lane. Thompson Lane is an arterial road, and you can see that they've, if you read comments last month and this month, they've shifted that drive now to where it, it works a lot better. The way that this kiosk is designed is with two pickup windows, two drive-through lanes, and so that's why you see 20 cars here on the site. I believe they probably have additional area around the building as well. But if you do turn right into the site, you can only circulate one way. They've designed the area near the building with decorative pavement, stamped and colored pavement, landscaping to create an amenity area, an area where you can sit and, I guess, enjoy your coffee. The building is here. You can see that on the screen, what's on the left side of the screen is the vehicle drive-through, and what's on the right is only accessible via pedestrians. There were several outstanding comments, but the representative has been working with planning, the planning department the past several days to get most of those addressed. As far as architecture, a couple of the things where the decorative light fixtures have been added to the building. And we had some comments about this screening on the roof. This is what you see from the side or the rear. Gateway Design Overlay District is very specific about those appurtenances, that if they must be located on the roof, we prefer the parapet to screen them, but if the parapet cannot screen them, they need to be grouped and screened effectively. So the owner and I have been speaking, and they're gonna replace this guard rail with a decorative screen that matches the storefront, and so they'll be able to accomplish that. And I believe planning staff is satisfied with their ability to do that now. They've also been able to revise the site plan to meet most of our comments, and so if you do approve it today, we'd ask that you do that, subject to all staff comments. A representative for the architect is here, representative for the civil and landscape is here, if you have any questions, or if you have any questions for me, of course, I'm glad to answer them as well.
Margaret Ann, can you go back to the screen that showed the queuing lanes?
Yeah.
So if you're on the south queuing lane, and you wanna turn left, is that gonna be a problem?
This one?
Yep.
And you have to cross in front of a vehicle?
Right.
So...
And then you got oncoming traffic coming from Thompson Lane also?
We did, I guess I can ask Katie Knoll, our engineer, or Mr. Huddleston about those potential conflicts and how those would be addressed. That is something that we've seen. I have a restaurant right now that's wanting to do the same concept, so if there are questions about that, staff is really interested in hearing those concerns, but I might go ahead and defer to Mr. Huddleston or Ms. Knoll unless she already left, which I think she may have. She stayed for Clary Park, and I think left for this one. But to talk about that, one of the things we had them do, and I don't know if this one does it, is shift that right-in, right-out to the south. You do...
I was talking about you.
We were over here.
Yeah, the one, the one who designed it.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Good afternoon, Chair Jones, members of Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We don't see that really as a problem, Mr. Halberton, 'cause the way this thing operates, they're sort of alternating as they go out of their drive, and so if you're going left, you didn't have to circle back to that main access, which more people will use anyway.
So what you're saying is, is they probably wouldn't be getting their food or their coffee at the exact same time?
Exactly.
Okay. I get you.
It's kind of like, I mean, you know, when you're sitting in some bank drive-throughs I might be sitting in, and they have two and three lanes, and when it's your turn to go, and you've got people pulling in in front of you, but you have to, you know, you're sitting at a stop, hopefully you look. That's what it looks like to me.
I want maybe him to explain the operation a little bit to you, and because it's a little different.
Sure.
Yeah, it's, I'm Elliot Morsi with the developer, and yeah, it's kind of like the Chick-fil-A's. I don't know if you've been to the one where they come out to your car. It's very personable. They come to your car, so it's, they know kind of how to alternate them, and the ones that have been built, that's kind of the way they go. It's alternating, so there's no real conflict.
So there's a pedestrian door right here, right?
Yes, and they will come out.
And the employees are walking in and out of that pedestrian door. Chick-fil-A's don't do this, and they're crossing that first lane of traffic and giving the food to the people in that other lane. So there's also people...
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
What other questions, comments?
I'll run on, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we are moving on to plots and plans. We have one item here. It is the Family Pet Health Site Plan for a 9,425-foot, square-foot veterinary clinic on 1.3 acres, zone PID, located at the southeast corner of Treasure Drive and Richard Reeves Drive. Family Pet Health is the developer. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commission. This particular item is coming before you because it is part of a planned development that requires Planning Commission to weigh in on the architecture. As stated in the title, this is anticipated for a veterinary clinic, shown here on this site on the overhead, which is a portion of an existing lot, so it would be subdivided and peeled away from that existing lot, and this is part of Region 1 of the planned industrial development. When looking at this particular project, many of the items, staff believes are in order. You can see the site is oriented at kind of a 45-degree angle to Treasure Drive as well as Richard Reeves Drive, and it does include a drive-through component for animals that may not do well going inside of the facility. It includes our regular landscape requirements. It is outside of a 25-foot preservation block wall portion that was tied to the PID, but looking at the materials in the project, they're looking at utilizing brick on the lower portion of the building, and then a vertical board and batten type look. They have requested that they use a cementous siding type of material in that vertical, and you can see it best in this section, these vertical elements. And in talking to one of the primary owners within this PID, they believe that the cementous siding would be an appropriate material to be used, but it is not currently in their PID list. From 2008, the PID materials have not been updated, and they believe that that's predominantly, it was not a material that was used very much back in the original PID days, but staff does believe that Planning Commission, through the way the PID was adopted, has the ability to choose that particular alternative material, but the material board here does state either metal, which is on the list, or a cementous siding like hardy if Planning Commission does approve that. Additionally, when we were looking at the architecture, the PID also has different design guidelines than our regular design guidelines, which I outlined in the staff report. And in looking at those guidelines, there's just a couple of additional items on the outside of the building that staff believe should be incorporated. One, the railing color is a bright white, which tends to get blackened in our fall seasons, and so we would like to see that a more subdued color so that it wears better over time. And then the PID talks about trying to change out some of those colors at entry points, so staff is recommending that, kind of this front feature, instead of just having the wood, faux wood on the underside of the roof line, that they would actually have this front pop-out section to be included in that. With those particular modifications and staff comments, the way that they're written, we believe that this project can be in good order with those recommendations, and if you would recommend approval, we do want to ask that Planning Commission spell out specifically that the hardy or cementous siding would be allowed for the vertical batten board for this project. And with that, the applicant's engineer is here for any questions that you might have, and this is not a public hearing item.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Smith? Okay. If not, we're ready for a motion, and just remember, we need to specifically state whether we would approve the hardy or cementous siding.
Do we want to discuss the hardy siding?
Yeah.
I'm, I think the hardy siding looks good with the area. You've Googled it. Any other thoughts?
What are the other options?
Where's the metal?
If we did that.
The other option would be a metal, and in this particular drawing, it's hard to see, but the bottom, originally staff had looked at, they're supposed to have multiple types of materials, so what they have included, and it's a little bit hard to see unless you're looking at the black and white, is that this lower level here is all brick.
Yeah.
Until you get to the drive-through area for your pets, and then really the vertical siding areas are only in kind of this garage feature, this secondary roof structure, and then some of those backsides of the building. But metal would be the other option that they did put down in case Planning Commission didn't approve.
I'm not sure to see hardy than metal.
Okay.
And the developer is open to that, right?
Yes, they actually requested that they do the cementous siding. That's actually their preference.
Okay.
I make a motion we approve, including the cementous, however you say it, siding in the hardy board.
Second. Subject is all staff comments. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, Commission.
Next, we have our new business. We'll be scheduling public hearings on these items. Our first item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 7.3 acres located along Veterans Parkway. David Scott Rowlett is the applicant. Ms. Rush, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commission, Chair Jones. This is the first item under the new business section of the agenda. We received a petition to annex the property from the property owner, Mr. David Scott Rowlett, requesting to be annexed into the city of Murphy Spurrow. The property is approximately 7.3 acres in size. It is contiguous directly north of a property that we annexed approximately six months ago and zoned for planned residential development. Villas at Veterans, which were townhomes. The purpose of this annexation request is to extend, to amend the PRD and extend additional housing up onto this property, a blend of single-family detached and a few attached townhomes. That'll be addressed in the next agenda item. The annexation study is being prepared by staff at this time and will be presented to the commission at the public hearing, and staff is asking for a public hearing date to be set for May the 4th, 2022. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any, and the owner's representative is also here in the audience if you have any questions from them.
Okay. Any questions about this particular item before we schedule it for a public hearing?
I'll run on, I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for May the 4th.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then item B is the zoning application for approximately 1.6 acres located along Veterans Parkway to be zoned commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. 5.7 acres to be zoned PRD, the Villas at Veterans PRD, simultaneous with annexation, and to amend the existing Villas at Veterans PRD zoning on 7.1 acres located along Franklin Road. Harney Homes LLC is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. This is the companion zoning request for the property desired to be annexed into the city. It is zoned, proposed for commercial highway along Veterans Parkway, similar to the property to the south, there is commercial across the street as well, and then the PRD simultaneous with the annexation would be for the portion to the west. The request is to, is to allow for the commercial highway for, the intention is for a restaurant to be developed there. There is owner of a restaurant, a local restaurant, that has gone under contract on that property, so they could pursue it, and then they're subcontracting or in contract with Harney Homes for the PRD portion of it. The PRD portion would allow for 35 single-family residences, which include 28 detached homes and seven attached or townhome units. As I indicated, this is an amendment of the PRD. Staff has been working closely with the applicant over concerns that we've had with some of the design of the single-family detached, and we even met on Friday, and they've been very willing to make some adjustments to those per staff's request, and so we will be presenting that to the public hearing as we indicated. The commercial highway is a zone that would be consistent with the future land use map, and then the Villas at Veterans, the PRD, would be, is not consistent with the current future land use map, but is consistent with the proposed future land use map that the planning department is processing right now. I'm happy to answer any specific questions about the PRD or the design, and again, Mr. Harney's here in the audience if you have any questions about the project itself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rush. Any questions for Ms. Rush or the developer about this project before we schedule it for a public hearing?
If not, I'll move for approval that we set a public hearing for May the 4th.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item, item C, is a zoning application for approximately 13.7 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, and Maple Grove Drive to be rezoned from MU and GDO 1 to PUD CH and GDO 1. Vintage apartments and TDK office. TDK Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This third item is for you to consider scheduling a public hearing for a rezoning application our office received for property that has frontage along Robert Rose Drive, along Medical Center Parkway, and along Maple Grove Drive, as you can see on the map. The property is about, is approximately 13.7 acres, and as you mentioned, is zone mixed-use MU district. It's also located within the Gateway Design Overlay District. The properties to the west that are zoned CH are the Avenue's Lifestyle Center. The little rectangle cutout in the colored area is property zone CH, Commercial Highway District, and that was the Peter D's, now McAllister's site. To the south is Everwood at the Gateway Apartments. Across Robert Rose Drive to the east is the Robert Rose Village East Development, which has apartments, self-storage, gas station, most famously Krispy Kreme, and assisted care living facility that's yet to be constructed but has been approved by Planning Department. This property is, is a part of a master plan, which is known as, let's see if I can find it, Robert Rose Village West, and I included the plan that the Planning Commission approved in 2013. When this initially came to Planning Commission, the site was zoned CH, Commercial Highway District, and there were some, I think some design parameters, I've got lots of pages in here that show the future development of this area. In 2013, the city created the mixed-use district MU and rezoned, the city made an application to rezone the majority of these properties to mixed-use, so from Commercial Highway to mixed-use. We left the Peter D's site as is, since it was already either under construction or nearly under construction for a restaurant, and so it didn't need the mixed-use development. But this property was a part of that overall master plan. And then a couple years later, you may recall, the specific part of the master plan development we're looking at today was considering a movie theater to be built on the site. The owner of Stones River Mall purchased this property and then relocated the movie theater to Stones River Mall where it is now, and so the owner of the property has, has had it for... But this property was a part of that overall master plan. And then a couple of years later, you may recall, the specific part of the master plan development we're looking at today was considering a movie theater to be built on the site. The owner of Stones River Mall purchased this property and then relocated the movie theater to Stones River Mall where it is now. And so the owner of the property has, has had it for several years, and through the years has reached out to planning staff to discuss the use of the property. Sterling was the entity that owned it, and staff shared with them that the property could not be developed with any multifamily components, any residential units. Because, of course, you all probably recall that after the mixed-use district was created, City Council observed the mixed-use district becoming consumed with apartments or multifamily. So asked staff to write an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would limit the amount of apartments that could be in these mixed-use developments. The way that was worded is, we said, any area that's a part of a master plan, and of course, this is a part of a master plan, can have a percentage of the property devoted to multifamily. If it's, a, a project of this size could have 25% of the area devoted to multifamily. Because the Everwood Apartments are a part of this master plan, they've actually consumed all entitlement for multifamily within this master-planned area. And so the various times that the owner has reached out to me, I've shared with them that apartments were not available here. And so today, you have an application from a potential buyer, TDK, just proposing to purchase the property. I've of course shared the same information, there's no entitlement for apartments on this property. It's not a permitted use with the zoning. And so they've made an application as a PUD, Plan Unit District. And the PUD zoning allows you to have both commercial and residential on the same property. And so their zoning plan, I better go back to the zoning map, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to skip a lot of pages here. Their zoning plan is two-part. The area that's blue on the map, they're asking for you to zone it mixed-use district in, or they're asking you to rezone it from mixed-use district to PUD. They'd like to build some apartments there in office. And the area that's red on the map, they're asking for you to rezone it, it's about 2.5 acres, from mixed-use to CH, Commercial Highway District. I think that's just maybe mimicking the same thing that Clary Park did across the street where they did the PUD with those uses that would not be allowed. And then the frontage of Clary Park remained zoned C, or was rezoned to CH, just to show that they have no intention of any asking us to consider more multifamily on that parcel. I think that was just a good faith effort to do that. And so, of course, the, the, the plan you have is to consider allowing apartments as a use which are not allowed. The, the plan, the PUD portion of the plan would allow 274 multifamily dwelling units, office, restaurant, and retail space. The first phase of development would include the accessways and the street network that's shown with it through the plan, and I'll go to one of those sheets. Let's see if I can find one that shows it. I think this phasing plan's probably better. You can see Phase 1 is the blue on the map, which includes an office, which TDK is proposing to, I think, to make that an office, and they would like to locate there. And then Phase 2 consists of the apartments, most of the apartments, but not all of them. And then you can see the phasing plan from there. So the office building is a 50,000 square foot building, five stories, 80 feet tall. The apartments, let's see, are to have a minimum of 13,000 square feet of first floor commercial uses such as office, restaurant, and retail space. So I think similar to Clary Park, where they are having apartments and having a minimum of that first floor be a use as a commercial use. Clary Park could do up to 10,000 with a minimum of four, and that's what they are doing. So this one is proposing a minimum of 13,000 square feet on the first floor, and then, of course, the rest being apartments. The, let's see here. When the staff comments were prepared for this, the traffic impact study was not available yet, and so staff hasn't been able to provide a full range of comments about access circulation or traffic or impact on the development. So we will be working on that prior to the public hearing, whenever you do decide to move forward with that. We, there are several things that I've put in my report that I would like for us to look at. I know that because I made this map for Clary Park and talked about Clary Park, I wanted to make sure to do it with here, because there are more apartments proposed here. And I actually gathered some information about how many apartments in the area. So this map shows you the Everwood at the Avenue, which is south of the property, and the subject area is yellow. And so the funny-shaped bubble is actually a 1,500 square foot just area, a buffer around the property. And I just wanted to see how many apartments were in the area, since that was specifically asked before. The Gateway Design Overlay District currently has 3,114 apartment units available or under construction. Of those rental units, 1,886 are located on the east side of I-24, with 1,693 apartments located within the 1,500 feet or less of the subject property. This map picks up two apartment communities that are not in the gateway. They're located across Interstate 24, but technically are within 1,500 feet. However, the numbers that I prepared and that I put in the chart do not include those. So even though they are within 1,500 feet, they're not in the gateway overlay, so I left them out. I also did not include dwelling units that were owner-occupied or assisted-living. So in the gateway, we have Clary Park Townhomes, Villas at Indian Creek Townhomes, Stonecrest Townhomes, Gateway Village Condos, Villages at Murfreesboro Senior Living, and the Blackett Gateway Assisted Living. So those are residential-type uses, just for the purposes of this information. It's not apartments, so I didn't include them in my chart that I prepared for you or in the map that you saw. And so I just want to clarify those numbers with you. The plan development approach allows the author of the book to request exceptions to the zoning. And if they're not specifically called out in the program book, then they need to meet our, our zoning or subdivision or regulations. And so the book wasn't completely clear about all the exceptions, but I think that I can work with Mr. Taylor to make sure he does outline them all. But I went through the book and identified, I think, the exceptions they'll be asking for. Of course, the first would be an exception to Chart 1 in note that doesn't allow multifamily as a use here. The second would be to request an exception to the parking requirements. They are proposing to not meet our parking standards, but to do less spaces than would be required in their zoning. So I believe that they're asking to remove the parking requirement for 13,000 square feet of commercial space. Of course, we'll get that clarified. Also requesting an exception to the minimum required parking for office, retail, restaurant, and personal services, because the parking that they're providing doesn't quite, like, depending on if you get a restaurant that requires more parking, or a medical office requires more parking, 1 to 200, than a general office, which is 1 to 300. So I think they're also asking for exceptions to those parking requirements. They're requesting an exception to the minimum building setback line from Robert Rose Drive. So to scooch that building, and scooch is my favorite professional term, but to scooch it 10 feet closer to the road, so from 50 to 40 feet. Requesting exceptions to the zoning ordinance and design guidelines for the architecture. The apartments in this building have an overreliance, or I guess it's the mixed-use, the mixed-use buildings, I keep calling them apartments, mixed-use buildings are hardy, and we really like to, brick, stone, or rock in the gateway for commercial buildings. Residential buildings, we do allow more hardy, but because they're mixed-use, there would be a commercial building. So I think that would probably be an exception. And then they had a note on page 23 requesting a landscape to some part of the, requesting exception to some part of the landscape ordinance. I think it's probably a mistake, but because it's mentioned in the book, I mentioned it in the staff comments. So those are the exceptions I believe they'll ask for. The future land use map does recommend that this area develop with a general commercial character. General commercial is not consistent with the plan that they're recommending, so the PUD is not consistent with the proposed future land use map. It's not yet adopted. But it's also not consistent with the adopted future land use map either, I don't believe. So staff recommends that you discuss this item at today's workshop and schedule a public hearing. We do anticipate that traffic impact study to be ready pretty soon. I saw some communications late Friday from our traffic department and their engineer that they were working on that. So I think we'll be able to have that pretty soon. Any questions for me? I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, Mr. Taylor is prepared to, I think, present some more information on the plan.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green before Mr. Taylor presents for us?
Just to clarify something on the, the master plan. Did it, did it include the, did it include, did it stop at the Armory Lot back there?
The Armory is not a part of the master plan area.
I think I saw it in there, but what was the, so what was the total?
There it is. So what, this, this is the apartments, it was?
What was the total size of that master plan?
Okay.
I'm trying to get it.
I'll tell you.
I can't remember, 35 acres or something?
I've got it. I spent a lot of time doubting myself on the numbers, because I knew you'd look at them. So I wrote them in here, so I wouldn't have to remember them.
How dare you, Rick.
Me?
You're so good. You are so, I admire you, and I also don't want to get things wrong up here, so. The, it's 37.5 acres.
37, alright.
And then the...
The apartments are 22.
The Everwood at the Avenue apartments are on 21.9 acres. They have 336 dwelling units. So the land devoted to the apartment complex is approximately 58%, a number that exceeds the 25% that's allowed. However, the apartments were approved prior to us adopting that restriction on the mixed-use. So the apartment...
While we did it, was because of this, like specifically?
That's, it's my recollection, and I, because I remember the owner, yes, it's my recollection of the, that conversation. So...
Alright.
Okay.
But can I just clarify? So are we saying, was that whole section, that in the red outline, was that all zoned MU and had a master plan on that whole section originally?
There was a master plan for all of this.
Except, except Peter D's, right?
It was a part of the master plan, but when the city created mixed-use, we created it, and we rezoned property to mixed-use. We just left it out because it was already a restaurant.
So the rest of that was rezoned to MU before or after the Everwood Apartments were built?
I'm trying to remember if it was rezoned to mixed-use before or after. The Everwood, I had the date in here, but I don't think, I had it in my information, but I don't think I kept it. But I mean, it's, it's an easy question for me to answer.
MU to put the apartments there, so I think it was already...
They may have, may have been, or I'm...
So it was just zoned MU?
I don't know. Let's see what she says. I, I shouldn't speculate on that.
Yeah, I'll, I need to pull up the zoning of this parcel. I looked up the zoning of the subject area, what it was zoned before and what it's being zoned now. The master plan has been amended since 2013 a couple of times, just because some things changed. Like when the movie theater came, that was a big change, you're not expecting something with that kind of draw. And then when the movie theater left, we, when I've, the current owner has, you know, every 18 months reaches out to me wanting to develop the property. And I tell them that there's a master plan with some transportation infrastructure that should be constructed, and that we'll expect that with any, because they want to sell out parcels, that we needed them to actually do that. I've been expecting a master plan amendment, probably, because the movie theater was the last time they updated it, and so that was after the 2013. But this, I guess my point was, this has all been a part of a master plan development, and the footnote, the zoning ordinance is very specific to say if it's part of a master-planned area. Otherwise, I guess if you start chopping it up, the master plan includes all the undeveloped property, and then you cut this off and say, well, this is a new master plan, you're kind of defeating the purpose.
Yes.
That, that's kind of what I was wondering, was what happens to, for example, the Everwood Apartment property, the zoning on that property? If you take that out of this mix, if it's zoned MU and it's only supposed to be 25% and it's already 58%, whatever, let's just say it's 25% of this mixed-use development, then if the rest of the property gets changed to another development, that leaves the Everwood Apartments zoned MU, at which point I guess they're then a non-conforming use, because they don't comply with the current zoning standards of an MU development. They're not just 25%. I mean, we've never had, in my short term on the Planning Commission, a zoning classification that had percentage requirements in it. So when you change something in it, I think it's new for us to figure out what happens to that. So if we take off and rezone part of this property to a plan development and leave this just as mixed-use by itself, it no longer meets the classification, or how we define a mixed-use development.
It doesn't. We, we call it a lawfully established, non-conforming use. That is what it is now.
So if they burn down, they can't rebuild, because they're a non-conforming use. I mean, we, and we would create that problem ourselves.
Well, I think we already have, because, because it's already above the 25%. So they're dealing with that today.
Well, as it relates to this...
Anyway, that's a...
As it relates to this new piece, I guess the reason is to clarify why I was asking, that if we're looking at the totals, you know, we're already, if, if this was in fact all part of the same master plan, and it was written, the ordinance was written to address master plan, pieces of property, then it makes no sense whatsoever to say, well, we're going to take this piece of property right here, and that's, you know, first of all, this one's already 58%, right? So obviously, it was, it sounds like it was done prior to the change to 25%, which is why we all felt like it needed to be in existence, right? Because it's just going to keep going. But as it relates to the master plan property, this piece is 58. It certainly makes no sense in, I mean, you know, of course, mixed-use is the only way or place where you would have percentages, because it's the only place where there are multiple uses, right? I mean, in, in, if you, as far as percentages of what type of use. But aside from that, we're at 58% now. And certainly, the essence of what I think we all did, Planning Commission and City Council, and certainly City Council was, the essence was to keep from having the discussion of, if there's this master planned area, then we don't, okay, here, we're going to sell this piece of property, put in multifamily. Well, here's what's left. Now, what's 25% of that number? Okay, we're going to sell that one, and we're going to do that. And then we're going to sell the rest of it and do more multifamily with whatever 25%. That certainly is not it, which is why I think it was used as master planned area.
That's why we have the master plan.
Rather than properties, rather, you know, rather than that piece of property within there. I mean, I, I think the applicant, Mr. Bradley, told me he felt like there was an entitlement to it. And when we talked about it a few months ago, or a couple of months ago, but what, do you still think you're entitled to 100 units?
Mr. Bradley, welcome.
I've got a lot of thoughts. I feel like I'm coming home, because most of the time I'm arguing, I feel, I shouldn't say I'm arguing, I'm debating a rezoning or an application in a lot of other cities. And so it's good to be home. It's good to see friendly faces out and seen you a while. As I was coming up the elevator, Kent rode up with me, and I said, are you guys meeting in the council chambers, or where are you guys meeting at now? Because I think the last time I was here, y'all were upstairs. And so, you know, Kent and I were laughing today. We said, man, we should have, we should have been Trader Joe developers, because to become apartment developers was, it's been, it's been really good over the last few years, as we're all feeling the effects from it. But it is not always the easiest thing to get, to get approved. And I totally understand that. I understand the position you're in. I know we've got two council members that are on here, and we've got two candidates for City Council. And so obviously, it doesn't take long, if you're on Facebook, to start reading a public opinion on apartments. But I want to share some of you guys for just a second. Our company was founded in 1959 in Robards, Kentucky. And when Doris Keach founded our company, he was a general contractor. And they built a lot of municipal projects, and they did a lot of projects throughout the southeast. And as, as the company grew and Tim Keach's son grew up, after he graduated from MTSU and went back to work in the family business after, after kind of starting his own career, and in 1986, he decided to move the company to Nashville from Robards, Kentucky. And so he operated in Nashville for a few years, and then he moved to, to Murfreesboro, because that's where he'd gone to school. He, he took shop in the old SunTrust building that was downtown, that I think since been transitioned. And he worked out of that office for several years. And then in 19, or, excuse me, in 2002, he built where we're at today on Church Street, which is right across from, I think, the King's Table. Some of y'all that have been here for a while may have remembered the King's Table. And so we're currently in that space. We have 7,500 square feet on the second floor of that building, and we are absolutely maxed out. And so we're in a position where we're trying to figure out what we're going to do next. And so I had an opportunity to meet with some folks at the city, and I said, hey, we need to figure out what we're going to do. We'd love to stay in Murfreesboro. MTSU has been really good to us from their construction management program for us to build a recruit talent. And we'd like to, we, we need to build and recruit good talent, and we need to have a really great place that we can build an office building. And we want to continue to invest in our community. And so we sat and we talked about where we could go, and this location... And so we sat and we talked about where we could go and this location picked up. This, this location was identified. I feel like we're being a little bit overshadowed by the apartments. Apartments, I understand, they're on the headlines every day. I see the city as working on a, a new apartment deal here downtown. And that's probably on the, on the tip of your, a lot of your tongues. But we also have to keep in mind, we're talking about a business, a growing business, that's gone from twenty-five million dollars a year in revenue to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars a year in revenue that is in our, is in your backyard and is an active player in our community. Let me tell you about some of the things that we're doing in our community today. Tomorrow night, some of you guys may be coming to our hangar over at the airport because tomorrow night we're doing the first shop banquet. And so we do that, we've done that the last several years. And we also, some of y'all have met, may have seen that, that the Boys and Girls Club are having Jay Leno come as a guest speaker for their, for their dinner coming up here in a few weeks. We're the presenting sponsor for that event. If you, if you've got students at MTSU, you may have had an opportunity to receive, receive scholarship dollars from our company for, for, for students at MTSU. We also are a, a, a strong sponsor to special kids. Some of you guys are aware of special kids here in the community. We also have support the Rutherford County FCA. Let me talk just a little bit about some of the boards that our, that our team members are a part of. We're members, we've got members in our, in our organization that are on the MTSU Foundation Board, the Military Tennessee Electric Board. We've got members of our organization that are on the Special Kids Endowment Board, the MTSU Rutherford Foundation Board, MTSU Construction Management Board, the First United Methodist Church Board, the World Outreach Church Board, the Murfreesboro Electric Pension Board, the PCA School Board. And I think, and I had the opportunity to serve with you on the 2035 Task Force. So I don't say that to say that, that to brag that what our people do. What I say that is we're very involved in this community. And what we're asking your support for is for us to be able to expand our organization. I could read you a lot of statistics. You know, we, we, we've currently got four hundred and eighteen million worth of projects under construction. We've got five hundred and sixty-five million that we're breaking ground on this year. And so we are, we are growing like crazy. Our organization is adding on, um, new staff members all the time. So, uh, we, we need your help because we are out of space. We're in the process. Some of you guys come and visited with me at our hangar the last few weeks because I'm working out of there because our office is being remodeled on Church Street. We're taking some of our larger offices and we're splitting those into two offices. And we're trying to find, find ways that we can, in a short-term way, make space and, and, and be able to, be able to continue to operate. But we, we, we're on about a two to three-year window where we are going to have to find something else. And so that's the big thing. So John, if you don't mind handing out these renderings, we spent a lot of time putting some of these renderings together so you can see what we're wanting to try to do here. What you're seeing in that first rendering there on the corner is that Robert Rose, directly behind the CH Commercial Highway property that we're asking you guys to rezone, that's where our office building is going to be. We're looking at a structure that's going to be predominantly glass and cast stone. Again, we want to build a project that recruits talent to our organization and brings talent to our city. Some of that talent's already here. Some of that talent we've, we've gotten from MTSU. John David, who just handed out these documents, he, he's, he's a graduate from MTSU. And so we hired him a couple of years ago. But we continue to, to make investments in people at MTSU and, and in surrounding areas. And I think that's important that we can bring talent to Murfreesboro. And we are in the apartment business. You know, it's, like I said, maybe we should have started out in the Trader Joe business because that probably would have been a lot easier to sit up here and present. But we're in the multifamily business. And we, and being in that business, we have a lot of people that come and they, they fly into our, to the airport here that we've helped make additions to. And they want to drive over to our office and they want to see what have you done that we should invest our dollars with your organization. And so part of the, part of the thing, and you guys are seeing the product, I've gotten compliments from several of you all about some of the projects that we've already built, the Vintage Gateway deal next door, the Vintage Avenue behind Jonathan's and other projects. They want to be able to see what we can do. What we haven't done in town yet is a strong mixed use project. We're doing mixed use projects right now in Franklin, in Orlando, in Raleigh, and several other places. But we don't have anything in our backyard that when we have somebody flying from, from out of town to see us or somebody that drives up from a surrounding community to see us, that we can, we can, we can take them out of our office and walk across the street and say, here's what we can develop in your community. And so we want, this, we want this to be an icon property that's, that's right next to our corporate office. And I know it's really easy to get caught up in MU and I know that we've, we've, we've spent a lot of time collectively, and I've talked to some of you guys about this, how do we manage growth? And how do we not get overbuilt? And how do we maintain our road infrastructure? And I'm happy to have those discussions. I think those are important, important discussions. Many of you that, that have had the opportunity to sit down and let me show you some of the, some of the facts. You know, apartment rents are up twenty-five percent right now. Housing costs are up thirty-one percent right now. What are we going to do from an affordable housing standpoint? We, we should have those discussions. This project is not going to solve that discussion, but we can set a high standard, like what we've, what we're doing right now in Franklin, um, and, and try to, try to continue to say, hey, we'll accept it, but here's the parameters and it's got to be quality and we have to be, be responsible with it. And I think we've shown with the organizations that we're a part of in our community that we've been a responsible member of this community. We need your help though when it comes to being able to find a new home for our business and our organization. And let's have a dialogue about how we can, how we can do these, how we can do this multifamily and make it work. We have, we've put, as, as Marianne mentioned, we've put thirteen thousand square feet of commercial along the ground floor. We want this to be a, a showstopper. When you drive through there, we want it to be nice. Just like our other properties that you guys have complimented us on. And so I, you know, I just, I, I want to make sure that we're not overshadowing. If this is, if this is just an apartment deal, I, I get it. Those are hard discussions to have. This is a lot bigger for our organization than an apartment deal. This is our organization and what, where we go forward. And, and I, and I, many of you that, that I spoke with, this building that you see on the front page, I'm willing to pull the permits first on that. This is not a bait and switch thing. I need your support though to get it done. If there's some modifications, if we need to change building materials, if we need to change some of the infrastructure that we're doing out here, let's have that dialogue. But that's, I, I think that's, this is a really important discussion for our organization. We've got several projects that we're working on right now, but this one keeps me up at night because this is our future. And so I need your support with that. Thank you, guys.
Hey Ross, you still think you have an entitlement for a hundred units?
I think, I think, um, we're going into a rezoning. So I don't think it matters what the entitlement is on the property because it, it wouldn't allow for what we want to do to begin with. So I think we have to look at this from a new rezoning standpoint for what we're showing you on the renderings, what we're proposing on our packet.
Well, I'm, I'm one of those, I mean, it's going to make a difference to me, what it was originally and when that rezoning. I, I, I mean, it, it just does. If, if this was rezoned originally and before Everwood Apartments was built, it said, that's the apartments and these are the remaining pieces that will be something other than apartments, that, that matters to me. If we came back and rezoned it after Everwood was in there and said, we're making it a part of this, then I, I, I don't, I think they deserve the right to ask for rezoning on this parcel, you know? So I, I, I just, you know?
I think anybody has the, the right to ask for a rezoning. I'm, I'm not arguing that. I'm, I'm stating, you know, in, in my opinion, the reason I asked him the question twice was first of all, because he said in our discussions privately that he thought he had an entitlement to it. I'm curious as to whether or not with what Ms. Green was saying, if that still is the case. And I think it does matter because a rezoning from a hundred apartments to two hundred and how many versus zero to two hundred and something is a difference to me. You know, beyond all that, you know, I, I would tell you that I, I already knew all of this stuff that he's just talked about. You know, this, this is kind of bigger picture to me as it always is. I want to support local businesses. I want to support their business in order to be able to expand their business, all of that. What this boils down to is, is this the right place to do it?
Exactly.
And that's just as simple as that.
I agree a hundred percent.
Where this all gets down to. We've had multiple conversations. We've run people out that did have entitlements for more than what they got recently. You know, it just makes this, it's fairly clear cut frankly. But I mean, I, I think anybody has any right they want to come in here and ask for it. I'm, I listen.
I think to be transparent, I've told Ross in private conversations, if it, if the fifty thousand foot of Class A wasn't there, I'd be a hard no. But when you're talking about an actual headquarters, which we've all talked about that we want, and here's somebody that's local that's bringing the fifty thousand square foot of Class A here, that not only is it opening up fifty thousand per, square foot of Class A in the gateway, it's going to open up fifteen thousand foot on Church Street approximately. So you've got sixty-five thousand square foot of Class A involved with this deal. That's pushes me over the other direction other than just, hey, like I said, if it was, I'm probably the most anti-apartment person up here except for maybe Rick.
Maybe.
I just don't want it to be forty percent, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. And so, I, but when you look at fifty thou, when you look at Class A, all the city's been saying for years and years and years and years and years is we need Class A. And here's somebody dropping fifty thousand foot of Class A riding our laps.
And, and, this is, this is scheduled in a public hearing, so I mean, maybe this is more. But the reality is, the eight years that I've been here and we've been asking for Class A, it's been so that we can move in new corporate headquarters to bring new jobs to the city of Murfreesboro. You know, whatever they call it, built, it's ready. All you got to do is move in. You don't have to get the zoning.
Shuttle ready.
Shuttle ready, all that, yeah. So, yeah.
So they're talking about two floors that would be open and ready to move in.
Yeah, so we're, we're top two floors, but I, I hear what you're saying, Rick. But what does that say to local businesses when you say, we're talking about for new people? What about your existing businesses that are growing? I mean, does that, do they not matter? I mean, I think that matters because I think that speaks a lot to, to our local businesses that, for somebody that's on city council to say, we care more about the people that could move to town than the people that are already here that are growing and expanding. I think, and I don't think you meant it that way, but I think that could easily be perspective.
Yeah, I think you're mischaracterizing it, okay? He asked, he said he's heard people say it needs to be, we need, we want Class A, Class A, Class A office space. What he has heard is that there have been people, the Chamber of Commerce primarily, who have said, we need Class A office space for corporations to move into. If you want to build you Class A office space for you to move into, I'm all for it. I'll say yes today. I don't, I don't even need a public hearing. So that's not, I mean, we're, we're not arguing about that. I'm not arguing about that. That's simple. Whether or not we want forty percent of our doors in this town to be apartments or whether we want to move thirty-three percent down is a whole nother question. And if we're going to be however many hundred over here and however many hundred over there and however many hundred over there out of two thousand units that we build in this city a year, we're all just kidding ourselves. It's a dang joke. I mean, this is, I, I, not the project, not any of that. It's all perfectly legitimate and it's all, I mean, I get it. I just, we don't have a mechanism in place to deal with what we've all talked about a million times. So I, you know, we're left with project by project and here we are. I mean, it's alright. Let's schedule a public, let's, let's schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, I hear both sides of the story. The one thing that I will say is that, um, you know, any applicant has the right to make an application, as you say. The other thing that I will add is each application has its own merits. It has its demerits and it has its merits. And, um, and, and I get that we have got zoning and, and we need to stick with it. But at the same time, you've got to take into consideration the merits of the application. Now, it may still not warrant it, but the fact of the matter is you, you've got to take it, you've got to take the application as a whole and what is it doing for the city of Murfreesboro, bad or good? And, and, and look at the application itself and does it, does it merit? A, a no vote or a yes vote? That's kind of how I-
And Rick, to Rick's point, on, on the council level, we're talking about much bigger picture directional stuff about percentages of doors and stuff like that. And if we keep having three hundred unit apartment complexes come in front of us, how do we get that ratio down?
Right.
If the ratio is always whatever percentage of permits are, are multifamily doors. So I'm totally sympathetic and understand where Rick's coming from on that, that part.
And then we, you know, if we get there, we've got to talk about, there's parking, there's the retail space or the, you know, rework space or whatever that is, uh, you know? Four stories, three stories, whatever, um, you know? There, there's a lot of things to talk about beyond that, once we, once we get to that point, if, if we get to that point.
How many complexes you guys own in Murfreesboro right now?
Oh gosh, in Murfreesboro, um, we have four or five in Murfreesboro. You know, um-
When you talk about other mixed use developments that you all have done in other cities in the southeast or wherever they are, what exactly is a mixed use development in some of these other cities? Is it apartment with this retail space on the bottom? Or does it also have to have some of this office, you know, what, what are the requirements that you're-
Absolutely. So Gina Emanuel is my architect. She's, we've done several projects. She's the architect on this one. We just finished one with Gina in Mount Juliet. It was, um, it's right next to the Chamber of Commerce in Mount Juliet. And that project was mixed use. It had, it had a, a commercial out parcel out front that has ground floor. I think they ended up taking and putting a salon in, in the corner of that. We have a restaurant user and then we have, uh, office space in that building. And then we have two, what is that, two hundred and twenty apartment units on that project. Uh, so that's one that we just finished in Mount Juliet.
And so is, is that like commercial on the highway and then the apartments are the high-
So that was a little bit different because that's on the Star Railline that goes into downtown. So it's right on the rail line and right on main, I don't, that Main Street drag right there. Uh, I'm also working on a lot of the new stuff I'm working on. I'm working on a large development in Cary, North Carolina, which Cary is a, is a fantastic market just outside of Raleigh. And we're a mile from Apple's headquarters on that project. The town of Cary, the first project we brought to them had four hundred apartment units and about twenty-five thousand square feet of, of retail and about fifty thousand square feet of office. They came back to me and said, we want to prove this. You need to increase your density. We increased the apartments to six fifty. We increased the retail to a hundred thousand square feet and we increased the office to two hundred thousand square feet. And we're in the process of rezoning that right now. So all these, all the different municipalities are looking at it different ways. In that situation, they have identified, this is a corridor that you have four-lane roads, you have sewer capacity. It's, you know, you're, it's got everything. We want growth in this area. Which I think is something that, you know, is a wise decision to say, we want growth in this area, but we don't in this area because that's where the infrastructure is at. Um, and so we're seeing that, you know? And one of the reasons we picked this site is because we know that the city's got sewer capacity. We have sewer on this site. Um, we're right off the interstate. Does it get congested? Absolutely. It's a main retail corridor. It's going to be congested. But we have a lot of arteries in and out of this site with Robert Rose getting back to ninety-six, cutting across to Wilkes-Pite and getting, getting on Thompson Lane and going back to the interstate. And so Matt and I have been having a lot of discussions about our traffic study and it seems to me that a lot of the traffic is going the opposite direction where we have conflict. So many of you have sat on the interstate in the afternoon, leaving Medical Center, trying to get on the interstate and you see that jam up where people are blocked. Well, the good thing about our development is our folks are going to be coming home at that hour. So they're not sitting on the interstate waiting to come home. Now, our people leaving the office, that may be a little bit of an issue we have to work through. But for our tenants, which I think is the more sensitive topic, they're coming back, they're, they're going against that flow of, of normal traffic from people that are either shopping or, or coming home from work, so.
Hey Ross, what's the mix on the apartments bedroom-wise?
Yeah, I'm so glad you asked. So it's only one and two bedroom units. So we're two hundred and seventy-four units, but it's all one and two bedroom units. And John David, remind me, are we sixty percent one bedroom on this one? Sixty-three percent of those are one bedrooms. So when you look at two hundred and seventy-three units, you can't look at it like a two hundred and seventy-three unit lot neighborhood, alright? Totally different, totally different number of people that you're talking about here. So most of our folks, when I go and I, and I do run demographics on our properties, typically about seventy percent of our residents are either, are, are single. typically about 70% of our residents are either, are single, right? And so, we're just hitting a little different demographic than what Justin Harney's hitting in his homes, right? It doesn't make one better than the other. He built a beautiful home. We just have a different clientele. Our average income of our residents in the gateway area is about $120,000 a year. So those are renters by choice. They're not renters out of necessity because they can't afford to purchase a home. That's just the lifestyle they're living in. When we did, when we developed Vintage Avenue, I got a call one day, I was coming back from out of town, and my father-in-law called and said, hey, I just signed the lease of the avenue and sold my townhome in Green Hills. And he moved over there, and I was shocked, but he liked that lifestyle, because he didn't want to have to mow yard anymore. He wanted to be able to walk to his restaurants. And so I helped him move in, and I got to meet some of his neighbors. The girl next door to him is a single doctor that works at the hospital. She's in her, in her early 30s. She has a great income. She has a student loan debt she's trying to pay off. And she's single and didn't want to have to take care of a yard. And so that worked with her lifestyle. And that's what we're seeing in a lot of these properties right now, is people that are moving here, that either they don't want the maintenance on a home, or they're just not at the stage where they're ready to purchase that forever home, or that next step up. So I think we have to recognize that need in our community, and we're seeing more and more of it. Right now, our average occupancy is 97% across our 7,000-unit apartment portfolio in Murfreesboro. And I'm not saying hours, I'm saying hours collectively as residents of Murfreesboro. We have about 7,000 units in Murfreesboro, and the current occupancy per co-star, which many of y'all went through with me, 97%. So there's a 3% vacancy rate across the board. So the demand is there, we just have to figure out how to do it in a responsible way that works, that we can still get traffic around town, and that works for everybody, so. That data, John, thank you, John, that data is at the very end of your packet. You can see it. Most of y'all saw it when you came to my office and we talked through it, but you can see what that data looks like right now.
I totally agree with the idea that we should put these things where we have the infrastructure in place, and these are areas where we want to grow. If this was on Joby Jackson, I'd be excited about it. I mean, I'm just telling you. I would be. I'd be totally okay with it. I think that'd be a perfect place to do it, so.
The problem, and I hear you, Joby Jackson would be really easy from a traffic standpoint. The problem is, is that young lady I was talking about that worked at the hospital, she doesn't want to live on Joby Jackson. And because that's, she's living there, and she's paying a premium to live there because it's convenient. And she's really close to her hospital, she's right next to restaurants, she's right next to retail. And in my opinion, that's the kind of people we want to bring to our community. We want to bring people that are well-educated, that have great jobs, and they're spending their money in our restaurants and our shops. I think any small business owner would be happy to have that type of clientele.
And for y'all's information, I also told him that I would, this is a month or two ago, that if it was on the east side of Thompson Lane, I would even be a lot more open to this, because people could walk to the hospital, and to the clinic, and to the fountains, to their jobs. And we have a lot of jobs right there, so that would really be walkable and pretty awesome.
But that didn't help solve the traffic problems right there at the interstate, when people are driving from the fountains back up. I mean, Rick and I, we have a good relationship, we're friends outside of here. We've had plenty of discussions outside of this, but, all right.
All right.
I think we make a motion.
No, wait, Matt still has to present.
What do you got left, Matt?
I'm going to be the very end of the agenda the next time.
So I'm going to make a motion, if we schedule a public hearing for this, September the 8th. I'll be out of town too, Rick, so, sounds good.
After the election.
I think Jamie and Warren cannot support that motion.
I wasn't invited for a meeting at your office. I'm offended.
Jamie, you're welcome to come by anytime. I will show you the data. Warren, Warren, you're welcome to attend too.
Wow, Warren, we were left out. He doesn't know what's coming in August.
All right, I make a motion for, set this for a public hearing on May the 4th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May 4th, public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have the right to have the public hearing, Mr. Leland.
No affiliation with me, please don't.
Wait till his comes.
He doesn't want to follow that. He does not want to follow that.
This already touched the bottom of the map before the his came up.
Okay, moving on, our next item.
A bunch of detached items.
Our next item is a zoning application for approximately 238 acres located along Northwest Broad Street, to be removed from the GDO-1 zoning overlay district, with approximately 20.8 acres remaining in the GDO-1 overlay. The city of Murfreesboro is the applicant, and this, we had some additional information handed out to us on this one. Ms. Rush?
Yeah, good afternoon. Matthew Blomley was very considerate and printed out the staff report that we had prepared and emailed out to the commission last night. So in case you didn't get a chance to review that, you do have a hard copy in front of you. This subject property is the one that's located along Northeast Broad Street, southeast of 840. And the city, we are in the process of annexing this property. It was, the purpose of the zoning that accompanied that annexation was for the development of Legacy Sports, a multi-use sports and entertainment complex. It would include indoor and outdoor athletic facilities for recreational and professional sports. It also included opportunities along Broad Street for retail, commercial, hospitality, restaurant types of uses. The public hearings on these initial applications were conducted by the Planning Commission on March 2nd, so it's just last month. And the city council conducted a public hearing on April 7th, and the second reading for the zoning is scheduled for April 21st this week. The current zoning application that's before you is to amend the area that would be designated GDO-1 to only be the portion along the frontage of Northwest Broad Street. And that would be the area that would contain the commercial, retail, hospitality types of uses. The other portion, the large portion in blue that's shown on the map, is the area that would be dedicated to the athletic facilities, the indoor and outdoor, the playfields. And this amendment was to allow a greater degree of flexibility for those athletic facilities. Going through the GDO-1, as I'm kind of new to this zoning overlay, there were several things that could potentially have conflicts with that type of development. And so, in no particular order, I kind of went through the GDO, and those were some of the ones that jumped out at me, was it prohibits the use of temporary tents for retail sales? I know that Legacy, when we were there, they had numerous tents around the outdoor areas, so they could provide food and drink to attendees, so they wouldn't have to walk all the way back to the large buildings where a lot of the restaurant uses were. They also sold merchandise. And there were also sometimes outdoor vendors that would also provide that type of service. Chain link is prohibited, woven fence material is prohibited. Those are, the woven material is something that would be typically associated with an outdoor athletic field, in particular baseball, softball. So that would not be something that would fit within the GDO overlay.
Maria, can I just ask you something real quick on that specific thing? It says, it's prohibited in any area visible from the public right-of-way. If, I mean, if these ball fields are going to be back there on the river, for example, I mean, GDO is not going to keep them from putting a fence around their ball field, right?
That's a very good question. However, we are in discussions where there would be a ring road that would probably become a public road with the development, with the site plan. So there would be public right-of-way within this blue area. Other ones were related to parking structures and screening on the perimeter deck. And probably the biggest one is the exterior building materials, where they're very specific in the GDO. It would allow more flexibility. So, not to downgrade anything in this particular development, we would still require them to comply with the design guidelines, which includes materials, and how buildings are designed, and variation in roof lines. So those things would still become applicable, because they are required under any of the zoning districts that are not in the GDO. I won't go through the adjacent zoning, future land use map. And in summary, it is consistent with what is proposed. It is in employment generating, which is one of our new proposed land use characters. And that is something that is targeted for things that would create new jobs, including athletic facilities. Staff is recommending that the 238 acres along Northwest Broad Street be removed from the GDO-1 zoning overlay, because those standards would not be appropriate for the athletic facilities, including the outdoor playfields. And secondly, the GDO zoning would remain on the 20.8 acres of the property located along Northwest Broad, where it can be applied appropriately. So staff is asking for this item to be scheduled for a public hearing on May 4th. And anywhere on that agenda you want to put it is fine with me. I'm happy to answer any other questions, as well as Mr. Hulston. Looks like Greg stepped out for a moment. Happy to answer anything.
Any questions?
I'm going to make a comment, just as, that you guys might take a peek at, with the idea of this ring road around here, whether or not it makes any sense. I mean, certainly, so like, I get the idea that with some of these buildings, you know, the parking structure not needing to be screened, I mean, I totally get that. It's going to be surrounded. We probably don't want one big giant brick building that's, you know, as big as some of these buildings are going to be. So I get that. I am a little hesitant on this, just to tell you my gut feeling on it, just because I've always had in my mind that, hey, even though this thing might be big, and maybe even considered obnoxious to some of the people who came to the public hearing, as their words, that it would always be pretty nice, because it's GDO, right? And so, you know, taking it away gives me a little heartburn, I'm just going to tell you. I see why, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is with that ring, you know, should, is there any, should we keep GDO around the perimeters? So that we're not, you know, so it's not so visible with whatever comes in next door? Should we keep it GDO and just make exceptions as needed? Would that just be too big? Would there be too much of that? Can we even do that? Those would be questions that I would ask you now in the public hearing.
So noted, we can discuss that among staff, and be prepared to respond to that at the public hearing.
Yep. Mr. Lenz, I would add that as far as exceptions, you know, the GDO regulations are zoning regulations, so exceptions would require variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And as we've discussed before, variances, and Mr. Halliburton knows this well, have a pretty high threshold of proof to meet. So unless there was a, unless the variance requests met those criteria, variances would probably not be a good option. But what we can do, and what we purposely did, was we advertised removing it from the maximum amount that we thought would need to be removed, knowing that if it was needed, we could scale back the request. If the Planning Commission wanted to keep the GDO on more of it than what was advertised, we can scale that back. Now, what areas would be appropriate to leave it on, I'm not prepared to say. Or if that would even be something that the Planning Commission would want to do, but.
Do we have a, do we have, I mean, they don't have a proposed layout quite yet, do they?
I think it's all conceptual right now. I don't know how in stone that is. Mr. Huddleston may have some additional thoughts on that. Or Mr. Taylor, who is working with the Legacy Sports folks.
Why wouldn't we kind of wait and see what that looks like before we?
Well, we're going off of their concept plan right now. We've seen, we've seen a conceptual site layout. How, you know, how definitive that layout is, I'm not prepared to say.
Do we see that as part of this discussion, or not?
Matt Taylor from SEC, we can certainly overlay this line with the concept plan for you for public hearing. That's how we established this line. We, you know, overlaid it to where we felt like the most appropriate places were on that concept plan. So can certainly have that ready for the public hearing, in advance of the public hearing.
And I also think that the type things that you've listed on here, you know, the temporary tents for retail sales, the vending and food, that type thing, would be pretty slam dunk things, I would think, at a variance request. That's not like, that's, I mean, it's obvious that would be something I would think you could potentially look at getting a variance for, if we, if it was all in the GDO, and you just asked for variances on those particular things. But anyway, all for us to discuss. But I think you're getting the idea here that we're kind of not leaning towards that, but we'll see.
Do we feel like we're ready to schedule it for a public hearing?
I think that we can work with Mr. Taylor between now and May 4th. And knowing the timeline of Legacy, we've got a pretty aggressive schedule for this request, for a Planning Commission public hearing on May 4th. And we're asking the city council tomorrow evening to schedule their public hearing the day after, on May 5th. And pending, of course, the outcome of the Planning Commission public hearing the night before.
That's a quick turnaround.
And it may be that every time you turn around, you're looking at something that, oh, gosh, that's a GDO. Oh, that, you know, so if that's the case, you know.
And we did, in our presentation to council on first reading, we did mention to council that we expected to be removing a portion of the GDO from the, from the application.
Say that again, what'd you say?
In our presentation to council on first reading on April 7th, we did mention at that time that we would be bringing back a modification to the amount of the property that would be zoned GDO-1.
Yeah, and it was kind of said, the brick, you know, it doesn't make sense to have giant bricks, and things can look better, right? I mean, than the big. But it doesn't really say, because we don't want to put landscaping in 200 of this 230 acres, and we don't want to do this, and we're going to have regular trash cans, and it's going to look like carnival. I mean, you know, that's, I want to make sure that's, you know, I don't want to be a bonehead here, but I'm, you know, if it, I don't want it to look like a carnival. I mean, is what it relates, what this boils down to. And I don't have any reason to think it will. I just don't want to leave the door open for it to be.
And I think that's the challenge. The big challenge is, is we don't know for sure what we're looking at. And we're making a decision to take a big piece of control away. If we had a good idea of what we were looking at, and that was what was going to come through, then we'd be all for it, do it one way or the other. But until we see that, that's going to be a challenge for us.
I'm glad to sit down with staff, or whomever wants to sit down and look at this, and try to figure out. I mean, you know, again, I think, so in my mind, I think that the, like, the outdoor venue, I would kind of view it differently than I might view one of the baseball fields, or a big, or a big lot of soccer fields. I mean, okay, we don't necessarily need gateway overlay with, you know, landscape in between every soccer field, obviously, right? I'm totally good with all that. But I don't want, you know, I'm not even sure about the whole temporary tents and all that. It gives me a little, but, you know, I'm, big picture speaking, you know, I wouldn't want the venue spaces and the spaces in between, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And I don't know that we can get that specific. Frankly, the reason I asked if we were kind of ready for this, or if we had the layout plan, is because it would be very specific, kind of in my mind, as to where these things, I would absolutely want them to continue to stay, versus the other places where I wouldn't care a bit about whether or not it's GDO, you know? But they're very specific to the uses, and if they're all mixed in here, that's going to become a very difficult layout.
What we attempted to do in our staff report was to go through some things that may be hurdles if it were zoned GDO-1. And, you know, the tents, I didn't have the benefit of seeing the Arizona location firsthand. Marina saw some of how they used tents on the property. The food and beverage vending was something that I thought would be good to put in there, just knowing how our Parks and Recreation Department oftentimes will have events at their facilities, where food and beverage vendors are invited as a part of events. Not on an everyday basis, but as a part of events at our city recreation facilities. And so I didn't want the ability for Legacy to do the same thing, to be prohibited by the GDO-1. And I think that, as Marina mentioned, the big thing is the architecture. Our design guidelines give a lot more flexibility. Our design guidelines give a lot more flexibility when we look at exterior materials, to be able to use, you know, new and innovative exterior, exterior materials, to make exceptions to our, you know, list of exterior materials that are permitted, and especially when dealing with such a unique building, a unique building type. And once again, I didn't have the benefit of seeing those buildings firsthand in, in Arizona, but what's been described to me by Mr. Huddleston and Miss Rush is, are, you know, buildings that are of large scale and are not the typical buildings that we would see in the Gateway Design Overlay District. And then, and then some, you might have some outbuildings, like restroom buildings and concession stands that, that, you know, that, that don't necessarily make sense to, you know, build to Gateway Design Standards.
GDO guidelines.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Averwater, I interrupted you.
Did, did we initially hear in the first public hearing that it would have to come out of the GDO when we were voting to annex it?
Um, I, I don't recollect that specifically, Mr. Huddleston.
Not at, not at the Commission, though.
Okay.
They mentioned that at City Council in respects to building materials.
Yeah, I wish, I wish I'd known that.
I think one comment that I'll make, as a BZA member, I'd just be very cautious of relying, I think it needs to be handled at our level here, and, and not from a BZA perspective, because some of these things, it's going to be hard to, in my, in my conscience, to vote for a variance because it's, most everything would be self-created. And so that's why I think it needs to be handled here and not get to the point where it's looking to have a variance. Just a comment.
That's a good point, Mr. Halliburton, because there's, there's very few things, you know, a concession tent, for example, there's nothing about the shape of this land or the topography that requires a tent as opposed to a building. So those would be difficult to put through the BZA process.
And maybe they should build buildings. Maybe they should build buildings.
Well, I'm just saying.
Perhaps, but that's...
I think you put the BZA in a difficult spot.
Right, no, I understand.
Yeah, and I don't think we're trying to get out of build the buildings we're going to use on a daily basis. I think that we've all probably grown up at some point, or had our kids go to a ball field or a soccer field, and you, every time I went to the ballpark, there's a tent there, whether that's to keep the rain off of them, the sun off of them while they're selling tickets or selling some propaganda, and there's nothing offensive about any of that that I see out there. And I think that's the sort of thing that we're trying to not have a problem with, a zoning violation down the road. And so I think once we share the concept, and we should have done that today, it sounds like, then I think that will clear up a lot of the conversation.
I think it was like the snow cone trailers and the food truck that was out closer to the field, so you didn't have to walk all the way back to the main building to get a drink or something, you know, and I think...
I, I think about, you know...
I love those things.
My, my daughter playing T-ball last year, and the Kona ice truck would come up and, and park right next to the field, and the kids would, would love going up there and getting shaved ice.
I think something else worth mentioning, we're talking about the ball fields. The GDO has specific caliper wrenches based on acreage of your site, things like that. You can physically not plant a tree in the middle of a ball field, and so where are you going to put all those trees? So those are the type of criteria that I think we're trying to avoid having a problem with down, and if, you know, this project was moving very fast on the front side, and this concept plan has been very fluid from the time it was announced, and so I think if we'd had a little more time on the front side, we would have seen a line similar to this originally, when we really realized what the impacts of the GDO on the ball fields, the athletic facility.
You may not have asked for that.
The rowing hedge is in the middle of an outfield, it's not a good thing.
I mean, I think it would be very interesting, I think MTV did some of that back in the 90s, but...
That'd be awesome.
I would pay to see that, so... What was the movie, they had the train in the outfield?
All right, so are we good for set a public hearing for May 4?
I motioned to set a public hearing for May the 4th.
The 2nd.
Motion is 2nd. All in favor, please say that, aye.
Aye.
Aye, when you post. Okay, staff reports and other business, we do have, I believe, now four items under here. The first one is to hear an update from Neil Schaefer regarding the downtown parking study, Public Infrastructure Department applicant. And Greg Judy is going to make a presentation for us on this. Waited all this time, sorry about that.
It's all right, it's part of, it's good afternoon, Madam Chair, and we appreciate being, the chance to be here, Commissioner, Councilman. May I need some help with getting over to the right, screen our PowerPoint? And I'm sorry, I'm defunct when it comes to this.
Matthew, is it a different file?
Yeah, I've got it open at the bottom there, yeah, that's great, good PowerPoint. I think it's already open.
Oh, oh, the file, I got you.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
And then, you know how to start it?
I do, yep, appreciate it, that's what I needed. So this is a topic that we were engaged with, the city, really late last year, we went to council with our contract services, so the last several months, we went through, winter, we've gone through a data collection and process, and we have a presentation that I'll go through, hopefully pretty, fairly quickly, that we want to basically just update the Commission on kind of what's going on. As I said, we've, let me back up. My name's Greg Judy, I'm a Vice President and Engineer Manager with Neil Schaefer here in Murfreesboro, and we've served the city for a number of years on different, different engineering, planning topics, so we're happy to be able to work with the city on this. So as I was saying, the city approached us about helping do some assessment analysis, and it's, it's interesting because it's a really multi-pronged process. We're working with not only planning staff, but engineering and transportation staff at kind of this, kind of a multitask endeavor. And so as the city continues to grow, and the changing land uses and development and patterns in the downtown, there was, I guess, a need identified to get some assistance at looking at parking downtown, and then there's a east-west mobility component that I'll describe later. But this afternoon is really informational purposes for, for you all. We did the same exercise last week at the council's workshop at the airport, and so, as I said, this is primarily a status report of kind of what, some of the data we've collected at this point, some initial assessments, and then we'll get into the schedule here in just, just a second, so. So as I said, we started earlier this year, and, and we're kind of this March to April timeframe, where we've done some initial, really intensive data collection and understanding, and some initial analysis. And our next step, as we go through really the first part of May, will be to do some more targeted stakeholder engagement, and we'll go through some of those folks that we'll be talking with. So as a backdrop, we do rely on, you know, the city's previous planning processes and documents, and, and we've had actually some initial stakeholder engagement, primarily at, at the city staff level. We've spent hours with Margaret Ann and Greg and others in engineering and transportation to kind of get their sense, and actually had some initial outreach with Ms. Calendar over at the Main Street Program, and trying to get some initial assessment with them, kind of give an idea of kind of where the city's headed. Of course, we know a little bit about that, but just trying to get that word of mouth out. So kind of the study area and limits that we're talking about is really, it's in the, opposite of the downtown area, that the yellow outline is primarily the, the central part of the city, that, you know, the Karen and the courthouse, and then the blocks surrounding that, and that's where the downtown parking area is focused. The red line outlines the area that we're looking more at the mobility component related to east-west mobility in the northern half of the downtown area, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. So I mentioned the, kind of the data collection process. We, I guess, just a, at a high-level description, we've spent a lot of time boots on the ground, doing assessments out in the field, and, and creating a GIS platform that inter, intertwines and interlaces with the city's existing data, and so that's something that the, the technology department and really the, all the departments that have access and, and need to use this will have this going forward. So down to the parking space level, so we're not talking larger, you know, aggregate level, we're, we're defining attributes and characteristics of different parking, whether it's on-street parking, surface parking, garage structure, that, that sort of thing, and trying to get, set ourselves up to be able to better assess and, and give some direction on kind of what, what we're looking at and where the city goes forward with this, this process. So some of the initial kind of takeaways of, and this was kind of interesting both to, when we sat down with the staff to review this, as well as just internally, to kind of get a sense of kind of how do the different parking types break out, and you can kind of get a sense of where the availability is and how it fits into the greater, greater landscape. So about 2,000 total parking spaces in the, in the study area, with about half of that in, in garages. But we're also looking at on-street parking, and we'll talk about that, a little bit more data on that in a minute. So as far as time restriction, so as it relates to turnover and the characteristics of turnover, that's something that's very, very, very interest to the business committee, local, local business owners, especially in the downtown, we want to have that turnover and availability of that turnover to be able to service our, our businesses. So currently, as it stands, there are a few 30-minute parking spaces, and you all probably know where those are here, close to City Hall, but primarily, the vast majority are these two-hour designations that are outlined in green. Interesting enough, frankly, as I said, our office here downtown, I didn't realize that there was even an app-based payment parking available in the downtown, but we identified and found this one location off of Walnut Street, and then across the street is evidently a, a private owner that's offering some parking spaces and parking availability on a cover rental basis. So there's a precedent for this, I, we can tell you that based on some other similar studies that, that our staff has done, you know, that this technology-based, app-based, making it user-friendly and accessible, that's kind of the expectations going forward. So we're looking, and we'll be looking at options and scenarios to see how that might fit going forward, but the, not only the time base, but also the cost base of parking is something that's very important here, because again, that gets back into trying to get that turnover and, and how that relates into, to more kind of short-term parking. And I contrast that with the more longer-term parking needs of employees, both institutional users as well as the staffs, and of the business owners and businesses that are here in downtown. We also looked at occupancy, did a kind of snapshot of late month and early in February, and different times of, of the week, I think Wednesday and Thursday were the days, I don't know, were the 27th and 8th higher, but, but we kind of did a quick scan, to get a sense of kind of what that occupancy is different times of the day, and, and not surprisingly, that lunchtime, that midday period...
Mr. Judy, question?
Can we go back one more slide?
If I can do this, I sure can.
And, and I'm sorry, I walked, walked out and walked back in, so I missed this.
So how far do you want, do we...
These two private lots, what were you saying the idea was with those?
What was interesting about these was, we didn't realize that there was a app-based opportunity for people to purchase parking, parking area in, in the downtown. Now, this is very limited, it's just a small area that I think off, off of Walnut, but as you get into, especially cities that have larger universities associated with them and an active downtown, both as the trends toward mixed use happens, you start seeing that type of, of parking process, if you will. And so we found that interesting, because like I said, I didn't realize that was available in, in downtown, and we see that going forward. Maybe it's not private, it could be a public process, but it'd still be app-based, so that when you pull into a parking space, as opposed to having a coin meter or such, you're going to more of a technology-driven approach on that, on that. So, and as I was saying, it's, as, you know, you know, folks younger than I get more apt to using their mobile phone, you know, on your, on your belt, belt and whatnot, to do, make those transactions, that's almost expected, and as you go to larger metropolitan areas, that's, you reserve your parking space before you even leave your home. If you go to, you know, larger, larger cities, they have that. So anyway, you know, Councilman, the point here was just that these opportunities are actually already technically present in downtown, not very vastly, obviously, but that's something that may, that may be a trend that we're looking at in the future, so we're just trying to establish that as a point.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, you're welcome. So as far as highest, highest occupancy, that obviously is, the numbers kind of designate where the highest occupancy was during the times that we surveyed, and obviously, as you kind of get further out from the courthouse and whatnot, you have varying levels of that. But we contrasted, contrasted that with kind of lower occupancy, and again, as you get lower and further away from the core, the courthouse and Court Square area, that, that just kind of stands to reason. But those are metrics that we look at to see kind of where there's high demand versus, you know, lower demand at this point, and as we use that as information going, going forward, so we just thought that was, that was interesting. So another aspect that we have, doing our field review and whatnot, we, it stood out that there was a general lack of wayfinding, that as you come into the downtown, especially for those that maybe not be, they may be tourists or coming down for different functions, whether it be, you know, different specific events or weekly events, that wayfinding is a, is a item that we think could be an opportunity for the city to explore and, and as a potential action item going forward, and we'll get more into that as we get into our analysis. But just knowing that there's a general lack of that right now, to be able to direct people where they might find parking based on their needs and where their destination is, that that, I think that's something that we might, might build upon. And while it's on my mind, I will mention, you know, we, we took to heart some direct, I guess, direction from council when we kind of initiated this process, that the, one of our objectives here for the city in general is to come up back with some action items, specific actionable items that can go to the next step, that can actually, you know, so sometimes, you know, we go through these planning processes, and it's, it's good information, but we want to really provide some feasible and tangible direction that the city can act on, over a phase, kind of a phased approach. So that's kind of why we're going through these steps of different, different characteristics and attributes of the parking, that we're trying to kind of figure that out. So, so again, accessibility, and, and when it comes to especially structured parking garages, as well as service, service lots, you know, the security and sense of security is, it's very important. So that's something that we'll be looking at on a kind of a location-by-location basis to see how there are opportunities to, to improve on that or, or expand on that as we come up with, with those plans. So just kind of overview of the goals going forward, again, we want to be able to manage the demand. The general sense right now is there's not nearly a lack of parking downtown, it's more about how we're managing what we have, and as we plan, of course, with the One College Street development, there's going to be park, garden structure, parking along with that development, and so we think just better utilizing and better managing what we have is, is something we can build upon. Making it easy to find, again, that goes back to the wayfinding, and getting just information out. One thing I didn't mention about the GIS, that there's, having that, that illustration and that, that ability to generate a figurative, both in electronic format even, we can disseminate that information, whether it's like a Main Street program or specific functions the city has with the Christmas Parade or any of those functions, we can get that information out in a, in an easier way that can be created using that GIS information. So again, getting that information out and making it easy to understand on map, online maps and that sort of thing. Mentioned about the safety and perception of safety, again, some of the feedback that we initially had from the Main Street Program, again, was just the ability to have some turnover for, to support and, and facilitate the, the businesses around the square and then around, around the downtown area. And I mentioned here about kind of the, the wayfinding and then using the GIS information and, and just the information in general about being able to come up with some tools to disseminate that information and make it easier for the public to find and use. These are just some examples of some wayfinding. Again, nothing, don't take any specific way from this, again, it's just more to reinforce the idea of, both from a vehicular standpoint, but also pedestrian standpoint, of trying to create a, a theme perhaps of, of wayfinding. And then this outlines some specific strategies that I think we'll be spending a little bit more time over the next couple of months, as we kind of dig in to the details of this, again, of targeting employee parking and how that's managed versus the, the customers and, and the businesses downtown. Short-term parking, residential parking permit program, so, you know, as the interest in residential use downtown continues to expand and explore that, how do we manage that, and that's something that we want to be able to speak to. So this is where we at right, or we're getting ready to really launch into that stakeholder involvement, dedicated kind of involvement. So we've already started reaching back out to Ms. Calendar and then the Main Street Program, to identify specific business owners that we want to have just a direct dialogue with and do that in, in person, perhaps virtually, but we want to be able to talk and kind of get that feedback. The church groups and organizations, obviously, that are downtown, and also want to talk, I haven't mentioned this, but this is not important, is kind of being able to dialogue with the county, you know, the county government and their, obviously their place in, in this process, and, and of course, the parking that surrounds the courthouse itself is operated and maintained by the county, so want to be able to go through that discussion with them. Just the last few minutes, just want to... Just last few minutes, just want to quickly touch down, touch on the east-west mobility, which is a component of this, it's not directly tied to the parking analysis per se, but there was interest in the city and the staff to, for us to help walk them through and go through a process of looking at improving east-west mobility, both vehically and potentially other users, pedestrians, bicycles. And, you know, we know about the, of course, the recent improvements done on the Idol Street as part of the redevelopment in the courthouse judicial building. And so similarly, we've gone through a kind of a data collection process. This particular diagram shows some of the traffic control, two-way, four-way stops and signalizations by different parts of the study area. Interesting, we're using an online, kind of cloud-based data platform to help inform some of this decision-making and there's a lot of information on this screen, but what I would say is that there's some cloud-based data that kind of allows us to know entry and exit points so that if, trending-wise, this is anonymous data, it's done on a kind of a daily basis, but it's collectively looked at. So if, let's call it a gate, so if someone enters into the downtown area off of Memorial and St. Clair, we know, we can establish a gate on the other side of the downtown area and see percentage-wise relatively kind of where people are entering and leaving. And while we like to have this information, it helps inform, feel for where people are coming in and people are coming out and in terms of internal and external movements. So some of the initial data, and this is again, at high block level, we plan to get a little bit further down and kind of break this up a little bit more, but currently right now, about 44% of the data that we've looked at are external, external trips. So those are folks that are coming from somewhere outside our study area, passing through and then going out the other side, you know, perhaps to Middle Tennessee, you know, out Greenland or, and so on and so forth. Interesting about equally split between the internal to external and then reverse of that, external to internal, it's about 25 to 30% of those type of trips. So again, we're looking at this type of data to help kind of gauge how folks are moving through the downtown and to better maybe provide some feedback and suggestions on how we might improve some of that east-west flow to get, say, from the Broad Corridor or Memorial Corridor over to the Highland or Greenland Corridor. So we'll be looking at that. And again, in a multimodal way, this is just a snapshot out of the city's kind of standard cross, typical cross-section, but we'll be, we'll be looking at that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, this is, we're kind of in the mode on this and trying to get through this, but we felt with the staff's report, it was important to just be transparent and be in front of you all so you all kind of know what's going on and there'll be more to come. So again, I'd be happy to answer, try to answer any questions, but we certainly appreciate your time. I know you had a long agenda today, so appreciate y'all's attention.
Any questions?
I'll make a comment. My kids, much to my chagrin, went to the University of Alabama, but one, the, why I'm even bringing this up is I've got pictures on my phone, you're talking about wayfinding. When you go to downtown Tuscaloosa, you have no issue figuring out where to park, where certain, where the courthouse is, anything. They've done a great job of, someone that doesn't live there, being able to find what you're looking for with or without your, with your phone.
You know my words, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
You mean to find the courthouse?
Remember, I had two kids that were not.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And so one thing, it's not, it's not a formal thing that we're presenting today, but anecdotally, we're trying to look at some peer cities. Bowling Green came to mind because of Western and Tuscaloosa, it could be, of course, it's a much larger campus there, but the idea is to, just other cities that model kind of what maybe what Murfreesboro is and will become, you know, part of the, you know, it's just all growing pains, right? We're a growing community and there's a lot of changes going on and we're just trying to, you know, every time y'all meet, it's, those are things that are on your agenda. And so we're just trying to set the stage to allow tools for the staff and the city as a whole to have a toolbox of things that we can, these things aren't going to happen immediately, it'll be like a five-year plan or 10-year plan, things that we'll be able to work on, but, but it is, we want the, we want the downtown area to be inviting, we want it to be easy to maneuver through and then for people to know, all right, if I'm leaving, you know, on the east-west side of town, whatever, I know where I'm going and I generally have a good idea where I'm headed and what my options are once I get there. So again, so, you know, we might not have all the answers coming out of this, but it's more about setting the stage and the tools, all right, take these tools and how can we best apply it going forward? So, but it's, you know, we're at that stage where we need to be more, I guess, methodical and pragmatic maybe about how we approach those kind of things. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. Appreciate your comment, thank you. And, you know, when we've got that feedback, so as we go through council and then again, these stakeholder groups that we're having, we really want that feedback to help direct that conversation, so that's again, a part of where we are with that.
Excellent. All right.
All right, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time, we appreciate it and all that hard work, very interesting. Okay, our next item under staff reports, another business, is zoning ordinance amendment regarding amendments to sections 2, 7, 9, 24, Chart 1, and Chart 4 pertaining to alcohol manufacturing. The city of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. And Mr. Hankins, how are you?
I'm doing great, Chair Jones, how are you?
Present for us today on this item?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Tell us a little bit about it, what we got to look forward to?
Absolutely.
Give some samples?
Later. Yeah, after it's approved. So yes, Chair Jones, commission members, what planning staff and the legal department have been doing for at this point, really, the last few months, and I think what started years ago, actually, was looking at opportunities to expand the footprint of available uses for alcoholic beverage manufacturing. And just to set the stage a little bit, what I'm going to do today is just offer you the draft ordinance elements that we've come up with so far, just to give them in front of you for discussion and workshopping, not looking for any action items today, although if you did want to go ahead and set it for a public hearing, we could do that. So a little bit of background of the process that we went through, we've met with several local stakeholders who either are currently brewing in the area or who are interested in brewing in the area, talked to some people from the Nashville area about what they're doing and some other people who are kind of players in the local industry, to talk about what it is that could help drive some of the entrepreneurship into this area as far as, like I said, locations, use intensities, things like that. Where we currently stand today in our zoning ordinance, we have one defined use, which is alcoholic beverage manufacturer, that's just sort of a catch-all definition. And then in Chart 1, we have that same alcoholic beverage manufacturer use, plus we have a brewery use that is not specifically defined anywhere else in the zoning ordinance. Currently, those uses are only allowed in the HI and GI zones. So what we've come up with, if you have your draft ordinances in front of you, I'll just quickly run through these and then as we start discussing, you have questions, we can drill down. First thing we want to do is.
And Mr. Hankins, just to let everybody know, that was one of the handouts from before the meeting, is what we sent out yesterday evening, but I thought you might like a hard copy of it as well to follow along during Mr. Hankins' presentation.
Matthew, do you know if it's on the computer already or?
I did, actually. Put it on there. Probably easier for me to find it than to, than to give you step-by-step of where I put it, let's see, here we go.
Okay. Sure. Okay, so what you'll see first is we want to more specifically define some of the uses that we envision for the city, both by the type of alcohol that's manufactured and the intensity of the use. The very first one here, I will point out, this actually started, I think, back in the fall when we did some amendments to the city core overlay as far as prohibited uses and then a couple of exceptions to the prohibitions, were for what we consider to be smaller, what we're calling artisan uses, uses that might be of an industrial character but are of such a small intensity that we feel like they can fit into, you know, less intense zones. So with that, we have an artisan category of manufacturing and you'll see everything breaks out now, instead of just one overarching use, we have breweries, distilleries, and wineries, and then different levels of intensity for each of those. Artisan is the smallest intensity, which we envision being able to go in the lowest intensities of zoning in our area. Then for breweries, wineries, and distilleries, we also have an industrial use, which we consider that to be your kind of traditional industrial, which will stay in those HI, GI, and ally areas. We also have a kind of a mid-range use for brewery specifically, which is the microbrewery, which we envision those going in more of the commercial highway districts, also, you know, looking at city core overlay areas. I think there's been some particular interest in perhaps, you know, redevelopment as part of the bottom study for microbreweries. And also a specific use for brew pub, which we envision that one to really be more of a restaurant that just serves beer in-house. That said, all the uses that we're laying out, as you'll see when we get to the end notes and the permitted uses, can have, you know, restaurant or tavern uses attached to them. But we wanted something that was, like I said, really more restaurant-focused, that might just, you know, be producing its own beer. The one that comes to mind for me, you know, going to UT in Knoxville, was Calhoun's, something of that character. And we'll also get, when we get to the use chart, see that that's, kind of has a specific zone in mind when we look at that. So does anybody have any questions about the way we have defined the uses? For section two, basically, all that says is we want all of these uses to be subject to site plan review. We envision a pretty robust site plan review process to know, you know, kind of beyond just the conceptual level of what the layout of these places are going to be, and that way we can determine what the intensity of their actual use is to make sure that they're going to fit on the property that they've got and fit in with the surrounding area. With that, like I said, we talked about city core overlay. Since we're coming up with these new, less intense uses, we feel at this point it would be appropriate to prohibit the industrial size uses from the CCO, but to allow the artisan and micro size uses. I'll go ahead and flip down to the chart here to show you what we've got. Like I said, in broad terms, the industrial size uses will stay strictly industrial in all of the industrial zones. However, the artisan and micro, like I said, we envision those going into more of the commercial zoned areas. Microbreweries, like I said, being that mid-range, we see them as probably the best fit still in your commercial highway zones. Artisan uses, since there is the 3,000-square-foot cap on the, on the use size of those, we see those as being able to fit perhaps in commercial fringe or commercial local, something that's a less intense use and, you know, won't be a sore, an eyesore in the neighborhood. Like I said, brew pub is also going to be what we're envisioning as the most expansive use because it's also the most, I guess we'll call it camouflaged use. As you'll see, it's the only one that we contemplate allowing in a mixed-use district. So like I said, given, given the character that it's a restaurant first and a brewery second, we feel like in the GDO or in a mixed-use area, probably something that will fit in with that character the best. So, and like I said, we can look down and see, you know, any other questions you have about the different use charts. But to come back up to the end notes, this is where we kind of get to the meat of how we're wanting to regulate each of these uses. Currently, in the zoning ordinance, there is an end note for alcoholic beverage manufacturing, which is where we've started in redesigning, so it's not a, it's not a complete redesign, but it's just sort of massaging some of the, some of the finer points. After talking with, with the stakeholders, you know, we, we had looked at some of the, I guess, the accessory functions that go on and milling is something that's a big part of the, of the brewing process. So right now, we're looking at allowing that in all of the zones, even though we're on the industrial zone first. But like I said, just with kind of the ancillary functions in there, you know, they can, they can mill their grains, they can package their products, both the industrial and the micros and artisans will be able to wholesale, either through a distributor or through self-distribution pursuant to state law. If they, if they're permitted properly, either with a state liquor-by-the-drink license or with a beer permit, they can serve for on-premise and off-premise. They can operate their own tasting room or they can operate a restaurant tavern bar area, anything they want to do there. They can also have live entertainment, they can have event spaces. But when we were, one of the things we wanted to use in the site plan review process too with these ancillary functions, we're envisioning looking at these and reviewing them as a unified use and not looking at it so much as the principal use being a brewery or distillery or a winery with accessory uses being the restaurant, retail sales, things like that, but look at the, look at the entire property and every use that goes on there under one unified sense and have them meet, you know, whatever, whatever the strictest requirement is for each of those uses, but not to try to, not to try to parse out, you know, to square out, okay, where's the restaurant going to be, where's the brewery going to be? Because as you know, if you've, you know, gone to a microbrew recently, a lot of times they'll put, you know, some of their, some of their tanks, you know, just out in the middle of the public space because they want people to see them, they'll allow tours. So like I said, considering what, what they have as sort of their integrated marketing approach, we want to, to work with that and realize, like I said, that you can't necessarily parse out specific uses for specific parts of the building every time. For the large, for the industrial uses, we are keeping the original setback that's in the current alcoholic beverage manufacturer end note, which I believe is 250 feet from residential structures on residentially-zoned property. For microbreweries and artisan breweries, I think we've set that back to 75 feet unless they're in the CCO. Yeah, so, and then for brew pubs, like I said, considering that they're really just more of a, of a restaurant, we haven't set any, any setbacks in there. That's sort of the 30,000-foot view. Before I dive into anything else or give the floor over, are there any, any questions?
Specific questions, anyone?
Yeah, I've had the privilege of observing this process over the last couple of months and I think you guys did a great job listening to the brewery owners and, you know, understanding the process because I didn't know what milling was like six weeks ago, so it was nice to learn all that.
Thank you. Well, but before, before I turn the floor over completely, I did want to get into just also the, the parking, because we've done probably some novel calculations for some of these. The easy ones, we're essentially leaving in the current alcoholic beverage manufacturer calculation for the industrial breweries, distilleries, and wineries, with the exception that we're giving a little bit, I guess we're relaxing the standard ever so slightly for outdoor seating, considering that it is largely seasonal and there's probably no perfect way to bridge the divide between not having enough parking in the summer and having too much parking in the winter. But the standard calculation for outdoor seating space has traditionally been the same as for restaurant seating space, one for every two seats, one space for every two seats. Whereas for all of the, well, for both the industrial and the artisan and microbreweries, we've added in having one space for every three seats for outdoor premises. For the micro and artisans, we've actually simplified the process even more to help them sort of, again, them sort of, again, unify their parking calculations regardless of the intensity of the uses that are going on inside the building. Felt like five spaces was a good, just flat number for employee parking, because most of the current, I guess the two current breweries that we have in town right now don't need more than that for employee spaces. And then we've set just the simple calculation of one for every two seats of indoor and one for every three seats of outdoor. Like I said, that way, if they have the tasting room or a bar area in addition to a restaurant area, or just a general seating area, all of that can come into one calculation without having to look in different places. Regarding the brew pubs and separate tasting rooms, which are still a possibility in the industrial, we can talk about that if you need to, we have just added those to the regular restaurant calculation, and leaving that the same as the one for 100 square feet or one for two seats. So, that is the extent of the changes we've had so far. Well, we want to hear feedback today, if you have it. Like I said, if you're ready to set this for public hearing, as is, we can move forward with that, too. Thank you.
Does any of this affect an existing user, or existing brewery, or tavern, or would they be quote-unquote grandfathered in based upon what's happened in the past with, whenever we make changes like this?
If there was a change that would make them non-conforming, they would be grandfathered in-
Okay.
Legally non-conforming use. But the way we've set it up, and I'll just go ahead and call out names, when we started this, May Day was the only, basically the only brewer in town. So, we kind of set a benchmark for ourselves of, we see May Day as an industrial brewer.
Right.
So, May Day and above, we consider to be industrial, and nothing in here has really changed for the industrial brewers what their regulations are.
Okay.
If May Day's-
Other than not being next to a church? I'm just kidding.
Yeah. So, and that does bring up a good point, too, though. The zoning ordinance does not, you know, doesn't trump anything that's in the general city code. So, I don't think breweries are actually subject to the church and residence, or the church and school setbacks that we have, but if a winery, or a meadery, or a distillery were to come in, not only would they have to meet the zoning requirements, but they'd also have to meet those code setbacks.
Interesting.
So, like I said, with May Day and above, we don't see, I don't think anything that's in here is going to change the way that they're operating.
Okay.
Where it actually, where it makes the biggest changes, and for the businesses will be the biggest beneficial change, is anything below the standard of May Day, which we do have one recent entrant into the market, Cedar Glade Brews. They moved, the specific location they're in right now, I think, is heavy industrial. So, under this new regime, if it gets approved, something their size would be allowed in commercial highway. And when you go in and look at their operation, they really kind of straddle the line between what we would consider to be an artisan brewery and a microbrewery, because they have very innovative designs with their manufacturing process, and they manufacture all their beer in, I think, a little over 1,700 square feet of space. So, the output is basically the only thing that makes them micro as opposed to artisan. So, like I said, you can kind of look at their footprint to kind of see what we envision a lot of the breweries coming in that will fit into this will be probably something between Cedar Glade and less than May Day.
Right.
I did want to just allude to what Ms. Averwater said a moment ago about the collaborative process with the stakeholders. Mr. McKnight, Ms. Green, Mr. Hankins, and Mr. Ives have been working directly with a group of stakeholders, folks that Mr. McKnight collected their names over, you know, a year or two-long period of people reaching out to us wanting to do these types of uses, but we're really hamstrung by our current regulations. And so, there were, there have been numerous stakeholder meetings where we've tried to see how we could address those concerns and accommodate these uses, and kind of do away with our outdated regulations that didn't really keep pace with the state of the industry today. And, so, I think that, you know, it's been a collaborative process, and those folks have been working with our staff hand-in-hand to come up with the solution, and a lot of work, especially by Mr. Hankins drafting this, has gone into, and by Mr. McKnight reaching out and staying in contact with our stakeholder group, to keep them informed and keep them engaged in the process.
I'm excited about it.
Me, too.
I think it means a lot for our bottom study that we've had for a long time that hasn't really been able to move forward, and a lot of the downtown areas where I think it will certainly apply, and so I'm sure there's a lot of people out there excited to see us get this done. Appreciate all the work.
Well, you're very welcome.
Comments, questions, motions?
I'm ready for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made, to start a public hearing for May 4.
That'll work.
Does that work? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you.
And we do have another item under Staff Reports and Other Business, and I believe, Matthew, you have something on the West Lawn Commercial?
I do. Before I get to that, I'm going to go ahead, just to make sure he doesn't get out of here before the end of the meeting, and introduce our newest employee, Mr. Gabriel Moore. Came on board with the Planning Department as a project engineer, beginning on March 28th. And, some of the faces that have been here a long time recognize Gabriel from when he was with SEC back in the early 2000s. Mr. Moore has been an engineer for over 20 years, and has private sector experience working with SEC, and I believe some other firms as well, and then also working with the last number of years with Metro, doing plans review, and doing a lot of the same types of things that he's going to be doing here. So he brings a wealth of experience to the table. I can honestly say that I really enjoyed working with Gabriel when he was at SEC, when I was reviewing the plans that he was submitting. I've joked that you can go to our office, or in the archives, and find plans with his stamp on it from back in 2005 or whenever. But we are excited to have Gabriel on board, and he's already hit the ground running, and we know that his wealth of experience will enable him to really get going in this position, and he'll be an asset to our department.
And stuck it out with us all day, all afternoon today. Welcome, Gabriel, and welcome back home. We're glad to have you back in Murfreesboro, making that drive to Nashville, so thank you. All right, so, Matthew, got West Lawn?
I do, I do. Back in January, Planning Commission members, you approved the preliminary and final plats for the West Lawn Commercial East subdivision, and if the Cable Department could bring up the laptop here at my desk, and I will show you this plat.
And then you also gave us copies of this?
I did, I did. I gave you copies of the staff comments from back in January. This is directly across the street from where the new MMC and TOA facilities are proposed. It is currently where Blackman Road and Veterans Parkway intersect. This plat was approved back in January, as I mentioned, and there are a few things that we need to amend regarding that approval. This plan actually, there's a preliminary plat that includes the realignment of Blackman Road to intersect with the new realigned Shores Road, and much the same way as was done across the street with the West Lawn Commercial across, on the west side of Veterans Parkway. The developers wish to go ahead and get the plat recorded, and then bond the infrastructure improvements, and construct those infrastructure improvements, including the road realignment after the plat's been recorded. So what we are proposing to do is include a few comment, a few additional conditions on this approval, and I've listed those on the first sheet of the handout that I gave you. So we'd recommend that both of these items, and we'll need two motions, be subject to all previous staff comments, as well as the following additional staff comments. Number one, approval of this plat shall be an integrated plat site plan approval coupled with a future site plan. All required infrastructure improvements shall be constructed and passed inspection prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for any lot in this subdivision. So that ties the infrastructure improvements to the first C of O, rather than the recording of the plat, and will allow them to post a surety for the construction of those infrastructure improvements, much the same way they did across the street. Number two, the renaming of the existing Blackman Road and the naming of the realigned Blackman Road shall not be implemented with this plat, rather the naming of the street shall be done at a later date, coordinated with the completion of the road construction. The street names shall be labeled on the plat accordingly. This is exactly the same way that we did it across the street with the Shores Road realignment. And number three, and this is to clear up a condition of approval that was placed on the original plat approval, the city, not the subdivision developer, shall be responsible for acquiring the small portion of right-of-way needed for the realignment of Blackman Road from Vanderbilt, and the timing of this acquisition shall be determined by the city engineer and the city legal department. There is just a tiny corner of Vanderbilt's property that's needed for the realignment of Blackman Road, and I believe that the city engineer and the city legal department will be working on that, if they haven't started already, to acquire that right-of-way.
There have been discussions with Vanderbilt, and that is in process, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ives. So we would recommend that you, in two separate motions, one for the preliminary plat, and one for the final plat, approve it subject to all staff, approve these subject to all staff comments, as well as those additional conditions that I read into the record.
If there's no question, I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat, subject to all staff comments and the conditions outlined by Mr. Blomley.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? And then, we need a motion for the final plat.
I move that we approve the final plat with the same conditions.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that that concludes all of our, oh, no, okay.
I just-
Mr. Malance?
Yes, from something you said earlier about-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Medical Center Parkway stuff?
Yes, sir.
If we have the non-conforming issue, if there's a fire there, or whatever, we need to fix that. I mean, if we need to go back and apply to rezone those things to RM16 or whatever, the right thing to be, the right thing to do here?
We could fix that.
We need to fix that, if that's what's necessary to do. I mean-
I just didn't want to, you know, create a problem for them if this other one moves forward, or one way or the other, it may need to.
I guess what I would say is, we may have, you guys will look at those things, that's some sort of legal and zoning matter that I have no, yeah, ever would, and certainly, you know, I mean, because there's also, across the street over there, where Bobby and Jewel did their deal, remember, they also put and plugged in apartments on theirs. It was based on their entire, their entire-
Master plan.
Master plan, you know, I-
But is their master plan still intact?
Maybe, I don't know.
So, see, if it's still intact and the percentages all, then it all still complies? It's what we're talking about.
Except if it burns down, does it then still view as some sort of mixed use, and then do they really have it? Because now, I don't know, but that's what you guys-
Just want to clarify it.
I guess my point is to say, if we need to fix that, we need to fix that, because I don't think we want to put anybody in a position of, if something happens, then we can't, they can't redo, okay? And, that'll make me feel better, how I feel about the rest of the stuff, too, but I think we do need to fix it.
Agreed.
We'll look at it.
All right.
Thank you very much. Any other staff reports or any other business? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.